Okay, great. Okay, so let's uh let's go ahead and get started, counsel.
Um, I want to welcome everybody to a virtual meeting tonight. Um, I am going to um do two little things to see before we start. Um, I want everybody to stand. Um, and um, I want to I want to give a mo- moment of silence. Um, that we've had, you know, a tragedy um, in in Baltimore City with these three firefighters and it 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 just almost makes me cry to even talk about it. Um, and the one gentleman um from from truck truck twenty-three. And then we had two firefighters from engine for engine fourteen and one of them was a young lady with sixteen years experience. These three firefighters were um dedicated, very, very experienced, and it's it's a tragedy. Um, and we I I want I want to uh to uh say my condolences to the family, the fire department, the city. Um, city lost a lot and and their present is known all over the United States of the hurt that has happened here. And we all pray as 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 much as we can that they're in a in a better place. And we are all there for them. And um, I hope for the best for them and we're we're there. So um, I want to follow that with um a moment of silence for a few minutes for these for these brave firefighters that will never be, never be forgotten. Mr. Lesher, could you could you say the opening prayer, please?
Uh, if you would join me in prayer, Almighty God, we give you thanks for all those who work diligently to keep us safe. Those in law enforcement and emergency services and corrections. We give you thanks especially for those who are charged with protecting children and our most vulnerable residents. Particularly children who are vulnerable because of unstable homes or homelessness, those who have been torn from their families and those who are victims of abuse and human trafficking. Bless their work and guide them as you guide us. Teach us to work for justice that we may find peace in our lives and in our communities and in our nation. We pray in your most holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. Ready for the pledge? Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher, and thank you, counsel. Okay, so let's get started with tonight's agenda. Let's let's get started with tonight's agenda. Um, counsel has an agenda in front of him for uh January twenty-fifth before us. Um, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay. On on dispersments of the January eighteenth and the twen- and the twenty-fifth. And and counsel also has had a chance to take a look at this. Um, and are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, so we're going to start off tonight. Um, and I was happy to to sponsor this proclamation, so National tra- um Human Trafficking Month. Which um, you know, we uh we support.
Prevention, Mr. Callahan, prevention.
Prevention, I'm sorry, prevention.
That's an important word.
Yeah, it is. Thank you. Thank you. Um, so um, uh, Madam Secretary, could you read the uh proclamation into the record, please?
Yes, a proclamation in honor of National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, January twenty-twenty-two. Whereas human trafficking is a serious problem on the eastern shore whereby traffickers use violence, threats, deception, and other manipulative tactics to force and coerce both young people and adults to can get to engage in commercial sex acts or to provide labor or services against their will. And whereas human trafficking is the second highest criminal enterprise in the United States, grossing nine point five billion dollars a year with the increased use of drugs, the focus on social media, and changes brought on by COVID-nineteen, increasing the level of human trafficking. And whereas the Eastern Shore Human Trafficking Task Force is engaged in anti-human trafficking actions by encouraging and promoting awareness and prevention of human trafficking. And whereas between June twenty thirteen and May twenty twenty, there were reports of child sex trafficking in every county on the eastern shore. And since two thousand seventeen, one hundred and twenty-seven human trafficking victims have been rescued throughout Maryland. And whereas across the nation, Human Trafficking Prevention Month, acknowledged in January each year, formally recognizes that human trafficking consistently occurs in the United States and emphasizes the need for the public and private sectors to partner together and focus on prevention, prosecution of traffickers, and support of survivors. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby declare the month of January twenty-twenty-two as Human Trafficking Prevention Month in Talbot County and urge all citizens to actively work toward the prevention of human trafficking, prosecution of its perpetrators, and support of the survivors of this horrendous crime, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this twenty-fifth day of January in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, we're we're honored here to um have Mr. Edwin Thomas, the co-chair of the Eastern Shore Human Trafficking Task Force um here.
Mr. Callahan, I don't see that um Mr. uh Thomas has joined us this evening. Um, and I don't see anybody um on the presentation uh uh possibly to represent this organization.
Okay, okay. So, okay, um, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll, that's fine. If if somebody pops on, that's fine. Does this does counsel, does counsel have any, any, any words, any, anyone want to comment on this?
I I I'll just, I'll I'll make the motion that we do approve this uh this uh resolution. Um, but let me, let me, this proclamation, I'm sorry, let me just say that it is very um very, very befitting that we we take the time to recognize this heinous, heinous criminal act um that's taking place all over this nation. Uh, young girls and young boys are are being placed into harm's way um by by adults uh for for um for money. Uh, and they're being put in just some horrendous conditions. Uh, and and yes, as the proclamation stated, oftentimes illegal drugs and alcohol and or or manner of just dehumanity, humanity, who humane um actions are being committed against them. So um, I'm sorry that the person could not be on with us, but at the same time, you know, it is very important that this council takes time to acknowledge uh uh this and our efforts to uh to support the prevention of human trafficking. So I will support, I will make a motion to re-support it.
I'll second that and agree with everything that was said.
And and it it is, it is appalling that that this is a problem, not only across the United States, but right here in our community. And um, yeah, we do need the organizations who who look out, who look out for these, these child victims. It's it's a tragedy when when anything like this is perpetrated against a child because the the repercussions throughout it, throughout the child's life um are 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 so deep. Um, and we need to, and I'm grateful, we we need to acknowledge the the work of those who are are working to ameliorate these, to to take care of those victims and to to prevent these crimes.
And I I will just step in and and say that I fully agree with all of it. Uh, I remember as a child, it was stranger danger. Um, now it's not. It, you have to keep an eye out even for family members. So uh, it it does take a village, you know, please keep an eye out for those who are around you. If you see something, say something. Um, but uh, I greatly appreciate all of the resources in the community that are there for these children um when when they're found and recovered. Uh, so all those individuals who treat them and and go through that with them. I I can't imagine how difficult of a career that is, and I appreciate all those who step up to help solve these crimes, to connect the families back together, uh and then be there for the support for the children after the fact. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vilio, and yes, um, counsel is right. Um, this this stuff is a tragedy and thank God we've got people out there that um are working to to stop all that and um we're we're there to support them and acknowledge them doing good work. So Ma- Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second it. Um, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack? Mr. Pack?
Aye, I'm sorry, still muted.
Great. And we will make sure that Mr. Thomas receives the proclamation.
Good. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, counsel. Um, okay, so so next, next up, we have a presentation um of of the FY twenty-twenty-one audit. Um, I think uh Joy's gonna, Joy's gonna take the lead and um we got the partners here from Chris um Lehman and 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 Partners of SB and Company um LLC. So um, welcome, welcome, everybody, and uh, um, how you guys doing? And who, who, who we, who we, who we talking, can you, can you unmute yourself? Can you hear us?
Yes, uh, hi, I'm Chris Lehman with SB and Company. Can you hear me?
Hey, Chris.
Can you hear me and see me, okay?
Yeah, perfect, perfect. Yeah, yep. Thank, thank you, Chris. So we 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 want to welcome you. So tell us, tell us how good we are. Okay?
And uh, Joy, I don't know if you want to start and then I can segue in and then um I have a presentation, I don't know if I can share my screen or not, so.
Okay, so I actually would like to start us off and I'm hoping that uh my internet connection remains stable. Um, I've been having some trouble this evening. Um, so um, Chris Lehman is the audit partner for SB and Company. Um, and is uh Williams not here? I assume, Chris?
Uh, Bill, Bill's here as well, yes.
Okay, well, welcome, Bill. Uh, so this was, this was the first year that Ken Davis and I worked through the audit of the county's financials. And that we both have deep knowledge in accounting and finance. We, neither one of us had real experience um working in local governments. Um, so again, this was our first go-round. Uh, Ken and I uh learned quite a bit and made a few discoveries, and now we feel well-prepared to implement some positive change. Um, we so much appreciated being able to work uh through the audit with Chris and his uh colleagues. Um, they were ve- very willing to answer all our questions and we had plenty of them. Um, and also uh willing to tolerate some delays as we came up to speed. Again, I just wanted to thank you, Chris, and your team um for, you know, helping us through this audit.
All right, I I appreciate that. So um, when it's my turn, I will share my presentation that I have here.
So, so, yep, Chris, go go ahead. Go ahead. That's fine.
Let's see if I can share it. Give me a second here.
No problem. Enjoy the, I'm assuming that was okay with you?
Oh, yeah. And so I guess I should have given.
So let's see.
That was your lead-in. Um, I did want to though, hey, Chris, I wanted to give Ken Davis a chance to speak if he had anything he has.
Yeah, no, sure. Thank you, Joy, and and really thank you, Chris, and and to your team. Um, as Joy mentioned, it was a year of transition for both Joy and I. And uh, we got, you know, the audit cycle started late by necessity just because of that year of transition. We appreciate your team and the flexibility you provided to us. Um, you know, working within a condensed timeframe in order for us to meet our statutory deadline at December thirty-first. And uh, just the uh, the body of work that we were sending your way at uh, you know, in a very condensed timeframe. Uh, the extra effort over the holiday season, um, it wasn't, it wasn't what we we'd hoped to be. Um, but and we look forward to uh not being in a similar situation in the upcoming audit cycle. But we appreciate the extra effort and the flexibility in order to um ensure that we met our deadline, and thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you, Ken. Can everyone see my screen? There should be a presentation uh that you're all able to see. My screen might look a little different from yours, so I just want to make sure you see our presentation.
I think, I think we're good. Is it the, it start with people sitting around? Yep.
Yeah, it starts with people sitting around. So, yep, that that would, yeah, I mean, I'll go through this at a fairly high level. What I'll do is talk about the audit results and if there's any questions, people can chime in or or uh add comments at the end, so.
Okay, that sounds good.
And as Joy mentioned, I was the audit partner, and then we had uh Bill Seymour, who's also on the call with me, who is the engagement partner again for this year's financial statement audit. Um, on this slide here, you'll see our scope of services. So we were engaged to complete the uh June thirty, twenty-twenty-one financial statement audit uh for the county. In addition, we're also working through the Uniform Guidance Single Audit. We're still going through the single audit process as the um, the the feds have delayed their um, the issuance of the guidance, so that's um kind of put a little bit of a of a hold on the single audit, but we are working through that. We also completed the nine-one-one uh trust fund audit as well as the landfill assurance audit, which is a state-mandated audit. Um, as far as completing the financial statement audit, there's a uniform financial report that we have to complete as well as part of the single audit, there's a federal data collection form that we'll complete um at the conclusion of the single audit. At a high level, we've issued a clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's the best opinion we can give under financials. Uh, that's the best opinion we can give under um under our standards, and that says that the financial statements are reasonably free of material misstatement. We did not discover any instances of fraud. A financial statement audit is not a fraud audit, but we are required to have a healthy skepticism that fraud could be perpetrated by anyone at any time. Um, we did not discover any material weaknesses in any of the controls. We also received the full cooperation of management, so any records that we requested support for, questions that we had, we obtained timely and adequate responses for those. We also did not note any uh journal entries through the audit process. That just speaks to the quality of the financial statements in the ledger um during the audit. And like I said, the single audit's still unprocessed. To date, we have no findings or anything of a negative nature to report. Um, but the feds did just come out with the final guidance about a week ago. Um, so we are in the process of completing that process now. But this slide here just is a picture of our risk-based audit approach. I'm not going to bore you all with the gory details of an audit, but really this just goes through and explains each of our uh major segments for the financial statement audit, which in the next few slides, I'm going to speak to the assessment of the design and operation of the controls, um, which is a key part of the audit, making sure that there's adequate processes in place from management's perspective to um have, you know, good controls in place and 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 from that perspective. So before we get into the specific internal controls, we look at the control environment. And there's five interrelated components that we look at for the control environment, which I've highlighted here. So control environment, risk assessment, information communication, control activities and monitoring are the five interrelated components that we look at. And we've concluded that there's been an adequate environment, uh there's been an adequate environment during the uh audit, during the audit um process. And then looking at the key processes, kind of taking a step further, we look at treasury. We look at estimates within the financial statements. We look at financial reporting, uh dispersments and expenditure cycle, as well as payroll, revenue, and fixed assets. In each one of these areas, we've concluded that there's an adequate um, there's an adequate environment for the year. And then if you look, I'm not going to read each one of these last sections here, but if we had difficulties getting through the audit, or if we had barely acceptable accounting practices, or really anything of a negative nature, I'd be required to bring that to the uh governance attention. But I really have nothing of a negative nature I would need to bring to your attention uh through the audit process. Like I said, it's been, you know, clean audit, unmodified opinion, no uh material weaknesses that we've identified. And as well, I've included Bill in my contact information here so that if there's any uh questions or um concerns during the year, you'd have our um contact information, you're available to access us. So with that, I'll open it up for any uh questions or comments.
Chris, um, uh, counsel? Uh, open the floor to the counsel?
I'll start. It's nice to see that we have continued uh great marks for our we've, uh, you know, our previous finance manager was amazing. Our new finance manager is amazing along with all of the staff. So I think that just goes to show um that we have the right people in place and we uh we take care and manage our money very well and have all the processes um to ensure a good uh use of our taxpayer dollars uh and going through this audit process. And I thank um you and your firm um for working with us through this, through this process and hope that you have enjoyed Joy this year.
Yes, definitely. Thank you, Ms. Price. Um, any other counsel member want to speak? Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Callahan, no questions from my side, just congratulations to uh to Ms. Nagel and her team uh with uh with new leadership in place, pulling the county through with a uh with a a clean opinion on this audit um in their uh in their first year on the job. So uh that uh that indeed, as uh as Mrs. Price said, uh says something about the uh the people that we have in place and uh and the systems that we have in place. So thank you, thank you very much for your leadership on that.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. Mr. DeVilio?
Uh, no questions and uh just appreciate everyone's hard work. Thank you.
All right.
I have no questions. Just uh again, congratulations and great job.
Questions either, other than Chris. I really appreciate uh you being on the team. And uh seems like Joy and Ken are very happy and and, you know, we're building a team. And it started last year and we're very blessed to have both of them and you on board. So um, we can't uh thank you enough for uh doing a good job and and um helping us. So. Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Still on or?
Say it again?
Okay. I I I didn't know if Joy was still on or not. Oh, oh.
I'm still here. I am.
Yep, okay, so you want to, you, but you, you or you or Ken want to say anything on closing here?
Just again, you know, it was a um, it was a good learning experience for both Ken and I. And
Right.
We did appreciate having um solid auditors uh to work with through the audit process. So um, I can't say enough, um, can't, you know, send enough thank-yous um to Chris and his team.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll second that. Yeah, thank you um SB and Company for the professionalism, flexibility. And um, yeah, and and as we get into the FY twenty-two audit, uh we'll have even more efficient and effective processes and an effective and efficient audit cycle that uh, you know, we expect to um have another good year in FY twenty-two. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Well, both of you, thank you. Um, and um, counsel's here if you need anything. So uh, um, appreciate you being with us tonight. Okay.
Mr. Callahan, um, can I interrupt for just a moment?
Sure.
I do see that Ed Thomas from the Eastern Shore Human Trafficking Task Force has now joined.
Oh, okay.
So I, he wanted to make any comments.
Um, okay. Uh, so Mr. Thomas, can you hear me? Mr. Thomas, can you hear me?
About now.
Yeah, I can hear you.
And I can hear you very nicely.
Yes, yes, well, welcome, welcome.
No, I was on and was listening and watching when the counsel, you and the other members made some very nice and thoughtful comments about human trafficking. So, and I did hear the proclamation being read.
Good.
I would just like to take a minute. The Eastern Shore Human Trafficking Task Force actually got its start right there in Easton as there was a human trafficking arrest back in two thousand and thirteen. And based on that surprise, because as we find out in most places we travel, everyone thinks that uh human trafficking is national or international and is not here at home. Uh, and this was the case where there was an arrest uh right there in Easton of a person who was trafficking several ladies in the upstairs of their house. And a number of Easton and nearby uh residents became very concerned about this, created this task force. And we have been uh moving on there for, public awareness is our uh focus. Uh, we feel that the more the public is aware, uh the more traffickers will be caught and the more children will be um prevented from becoming victims of trafficking. So very pleased with what you were able to do tonight and taking the proclamation seriously. And thank you for um enabling us to be there. And we've had a number of our meetings right there in the library uh in Easton and actually got started in the restaurant across the tur- street, uh the Socia. So um, we have a lot beginning in Easton. Uh, we're pleased about that and it's still going on throughout the other counties as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And like we said a few little bit ago, we can't thank you and your team for for all that you're doing for the safety of of people that are in trouble and kids and stuff like that. Um, and with, there's, there's, there's just so many bad things and and bad people out there prying on people. And and um, it's, it's good to know that people like you are around to help. And if it's anything that the council can do, please always feel free to reach out to the council. Um, reach out. Obviously, you're in in touch with uh Sheriff Gamble, and if anything we can do to help help stop any of this stuff, um, you just, you just please contact us and let us know. We're there for you.
Thank you for that. We'll look forward to that.
I would thank you.
Mr. Thomas, since you were able to join us, I just want to thank you for all the work that you and your your task force is doing. And and that uh, that case that you just uh mentioned, I I do remember that. When you started talking about it, I do remember it. Uh, there was over top of a a restaurant here in Easton, if I remember correctly. Um, massage parlor or or something of that, of that nature was a business on the bottom and some rooms on the top. Um, but I know also uh Kenneth Morris, who has, of course, a connection here to Talbot County being the great, 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 great grandson of Frederick Douglass, has done a lot of work on human trafficking. Uh, and he has promoted several events around the country. Uh, he was here in Talbot County uh two years ago before the pandemic hit uh during Frederick Douglass Day and and spoke to a group of us quite extensively about his efforts on human trafficking. So uh, again, just want to say tip my hat to you and your and your and your team for what you're doing here locally. Uh, and and I know there's an effort nationally also to address this discourage on humanity. Thank you.
Yeah, there was a very nice um Frederick Douglass event in your library a couple of years ago. years ago and we were part of that. So one of the things you might think about is that everybody, every child virtually has a telephone, a cell phone. And cell phones are the way that pimps and predators reach out and begin trolling and begin with young people. So the more parents can pay attention to how their children use their cell phones, the more likely their children are unlikely to become victims of human trafficking. So keep that in mind and thank you for allowing me to have another word.
Thank you. Any other Council member would like to say something? Okay. All right. That sounds good. Thanks a lot, Mr. Thomas. And we'll, we'll, we're there for you.
Thank you.
Next up, we're getting ready to get a, get an update with the Talbot County Department of Social Services on Children Advocacy Center with Empower Me programs. And I want to welcome Ms. Linda Webb. Is she, is she on here?
I am.
Linda, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you, Mr. Callahan?
I'm doing great, thank you. I'm doing great. So you want to, you want to go ahead and get us, is, is, is Paris, is she on here too?
She should be.
Yes, I am.
Is she? Okay. We don't want to forget you, for sure.
And I've got a presentation. I don't know, Jessica, will you be showing it or should I be prepared to share my screen?
I can share my screen, Linda, and you can just let me know when you're ready to go to the next slide.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So thank you so much, President Callahan and members of the Council for having me back. We wanted to come back and do an update on the Talbot County Children's Advocacy Center and spend a little time talking about a prevention program that we coordinate called Empower Me. I want to start off with a little bit of good news. You'll see at the bottom corners of the introductory slide here, two logos. The logo on the left is the one from the Council on Accreditation, which indicates that we are an accredited agency. You may recall that you helped us out this year with the cost of our site visit, which took place the week before Thanksgiving in November of 2021. We successfully reaccredited the Talbot County Department of Social Services and in fact, for the second cycle in a row, achieved what they call expedited accreditation, which means that we met every standard, there was no corrective action required, and we are now reaccredited for another four-year cycle with the Council on Accreditation. The logo on the right is the logo of the National Children's Alliance. This is an organization that supports children's advocacy centers across the country and also accredits those organizations. We are in the midst of our reaccreditation work with the National Children's Alliance now, and we will be visited on May the 10th, 2022 for our site visit to complete that reaccreditation process. So we can move on to the next slide. So I just want to, you know, I always try to share a little bit of personalized information when I'm here to talk with you about the programs that the Department of Social Services runs. The hands that you see on the left of your screen are the hands of some young women who participated in an art therapy group, oh, maybe the first year of the pandemic. And they're showing you the jewelry, the rings that they made as a part of that art therapy group. You may recall from when I was with you last time that we talked about, not only do we provide mental health therapy, but we provide alternative therapies because different individuals heal in different ways. And art therapy is one of those services that we provide. And this, this is a group of young ladies that participated and are proudly showing the, the results of their work there. Next slide, please. So in case you didn't hear my presentation last time, I just want to very briefly go over what the Talbot County Children's Advocacy Center is and does. So a CAC provides services and support to child victims of sex abuse, severe physical abuse and extreme neglect. We also serve the non-offending caregivers. A little while ago, we heard Councilmember DiVillio talk about stranger danger, and you're absolutely correct. We rarely see child abuse, especially sexual abuse, taking place at the hands of someone that the child and the family does not know. So often, the maltreter is a member of the family or someone who is close to the family who has to be removed from the household and they receive services elsewhere. We serve the child and the non-offending caregiver. Those services are provided through a multidisciplinary team of professionals. That includes our Child Protective Services workers, our family advocate, our legal law enforcement, medical and mental health partners. The Children's Advocacy is a location. It's a place where we do specialized forensic interviews as well as medical examinations and provide services. But it's also a best practice model of care for children who have been sexually abused. Prior to the implementation of children's advocacy centers, let's say a child discloses to a teacher at school that something's happened at home. Next, a Child Protective Services investigator asks the child questions. Then the state's attorney may ask the child's questions and a doctor may ask the child's questions. And each time that child is questioned about their experience, they are re-traumatized from the sex abuse incidents. The implementation of children's advocacy centers created a multidisciplinary team of professionals that would observe a specially trained forensic interviewer, interview the child remotely and could communicate with the investigator to make sure that all of the questions that were needed in order to try to elicit information from the child to support an investigation and whatever else needed to be done by that team happened just once. And those interviews are recorded so that they can be used as evidence and we don't even have to always have the child, you know, speak with the state's attorney's office, perhaps not testify in court and protect the child from re-traumatization in that way. Next slide, please. So I, as I explained last time, we are so fortunate in Talbot County to have the partnerships that we do in the operation of the Children's Advocacy Center. And all of these partnerships are critical in sustaining the services that we provide. We've been working with the hospital, currently University of Maryland Shore Regional Health, for the last 18 years in the operation of the Children's Advocacy Center. The Talbot County Department of Social Services provides a family advocate. That's an individual that supports the child and the family in the CPS investigation through the medical examination and through any other legal or systems that they need to participate in as a result of the incident of sex abuse. We employ a Child Advocacy Center coordinator who coordinates all of the activities of the CAC. We also have a supervisor, a program manager, and we provide all of the administrative functions of the Children's Advocacy Center like grant writing, tracking for the grants, reporting for the grants. The University of Maryland Shore Regional Health provides us with a physical location for the Children's Advocacy Center. They also provide specially trained sex abuse nurse examiner, examiners, as well as medical equipment and laboratory services. Now, the healthiest children's advocacy centers all make sure that their funds come from a blend of different sources. That's just good business and we don't want to be too reliant on any one funding source in case something changes. We really need to make sure that we are able to respond quickly. And as you know, we had a similar, such a change in the last year when the changes in the health delivery system of University of Maryland Shore Regional Health System in the region changed and we had to move out of the hospital and into a separate location, again, provided by University of Maryland Shore Regional Health. But I do want to take a moment to mention the many organizations that provide the Children's Advocacy Center with support. They include the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth and Victim Services. We get a lot of grant funding from that office that really sustains the CAC. But you, County Council, provided us with some very generous support this year, which we appreciate. Talbot Community Connections is a nonprofit that raises funds for Department of Social Services that are not funded by other government entities. They provide us with funding through fundraising as well as grants that they secure from organizations such as Midshore Community Foundation, the St. John Foundation, Women and Girls Fund and Christmas in St. Michael's. We've even gotten some funding from the Caroline Foundation through the Caroline County Department of Social Services. And you might ask why? And that is because this Children's Advocacy Center provides the medical services for the region. So our medical program provides medical services to child victims of sex abuse from Kent, Caroline, Talbot, Dorchester and Queen Anne's Counties. And then we can't forget Easton Utilities. They provide us with internet service at the Children's Advocacy Center. Next slide, please. So probably what people are most interested in is the impact that the CAC has in the community. You can see here that the number of children and adults served have grown steadily through 2020. We did a couple of things that year that helped us increase our penetration into the community, reaching families and children who are in need of these services. One, we increased our family advocate from part-time to full-time. We knew that that was a service that was needed more in the community. We went to each of the five jurisdictions that the Children's Advocacy Center served and worked with their multidisciplinary teams to increase their referrals to the CAC so that we can support child victims of sex abuse. And we, we have gotten better at our data collection over the last couple of years. Now you can see that some of the challenges that we went through in 2020, early in the pandemic, for example, some of our numbers dropped. But this year, from July through the end of December, we've already served families with 253 sessions with the family advocate. We've served 94 children and adults. We've conducted 38 forensic interviews and we've conducted nine medical examinations. This fiscal year to date, we've also provided financial assistance for emergency stabilization to nine families with 22 children and childcare assistance to 15 children from five families. So we provide these resources to meet immediate needs, which help families focus on healing from the trauma that they've experienced. Now, I guess it's fortuitous that we're here this evening and on the same evening that human trafficking has been discussed as a part of the National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. We too work with child victims of human trafficking. We're currently working with, on one case and completing interviews right now. At this point, we have one offender and three to four victims. We had two cases last year and we frequently provide support for forensic interviews to happen by Homeland Security and the FBI in the Children's Advocacy Center. Those two federal agencies used the CAC six times last year for cases that crossed state lines and involved multiple law enforcement jurisdictions. And we did just have our CAC coordinator complete a 24-hour training on forensic interviews of child sex trafficking victims. So those forensic interviews are highly specialized and young children and young adults who have been victims of human trafficking require special interview skills. Okay, next slide, please. So what's new at the Talbot County Children's Advocacy Center? We have hired a new medical director. We're thrilled. It's a local nurse practitioner and she is highly enthusiastic about joining our team and helping us not only by conducting medical examinations, working with the medical team from the hospital, but also helping us do community outreach about all the wonderful things that Children's Advocacy Center does. We held our first in-person open house on October 18th of last year, and I want to thank Councilmembers Pack and Lesher for attending. We really appreciated having you there. Senator Eckert and Delegate Mounts attended, Dr. Griffith, and we had representatives from all of the regional multidisciplinary teams and other community partners. So it was very successful and we were very proud to show off our new space provided by University of Maryland Shore Regional Health. We've offered 53 training opportunities this fiscal year to date to members of our multidisciplinary team. It is incredibly important to keep those MDT members up to date on changes in areas like investigation, interview, medical trauma, mental health and forensic sciences and techniques. So we continue to provide expert care to the children that we serve. We implemented a youth feedback survey. We've just begun implementing that survey, trying to get feedback from the young people that are served there around our services and making sure that in addition to all of these technical services, we are providing them with the environment and the support that is helpful in their healing and in the healing of their families. So that, oh, and we're preparing for our reaccreditation site visit in May, currently scheduled for May the 10th. So that's all that I have on the Children's Advocacy Center. But as President Callahan mentioned, I have with me today Paris Quillet, who is the Department's Special Projects Coordinator. You heard Mr. Thomas of the Task Force talk about child and family education and how important that is in preventing human trafficking. It's also important in the prevention of child abuse. We see the impact of child sex abuse in that Children's Advocacy Center every day. And so a number of years ago, the Department of Social Services started implementing what's called Empower Me. It's a child safety and child abuse prevention program and Paris is here to talk about that. So Paris, are you on?
Yes, I am. Good evening. How is everyone? Thank you for the opportunity to come and share about Empower Me. Linda couldn't have set the stage better and how timely to have this presentation tonight as we're honoring the National Prevention Month of Human Trafficking. As Linda opened, Empower Me is a child sex abuse prevention program. So looking at all of the victims, both in human trafficking and child sex abuse in our community. First slide you'll see here, pictured on the right is Allison Fay. She is the founder of the program Empower Me, which was developed by the Jacob Wetterling Resource Center and the Zero Abuse Project in Minnesota. Next slide, please. So just a brief overview of Empower Me. It's a child sex abuse prevention program, as we said, teaches children and adults about personal safety. So that's one of the beauties of the program is that not only are we providing this program directly to children to help build their skillset, but we're also teaching adults and community members. The goal is to reduce the incidence of child sex, sex abuse by providing the education, education to adults and raising community awareness, providing child, children and caregivers with the language and the tools to help themselves and to keep others safe. Extremely important. I always say I love presenting to the children, but what's more powerful is presenting to the adults because it's our responsibility as adults to help keep kids safe. Next slide, please. So we're focusing with Empower Me on teaching children about gut instinct. Believe it or not, we're teaching adults about that too, right? As adults, we know what gut instinct is, but did you know, and if you reflect in your childhood, did anybody ever teach you about that, how to listen to your gut, what that gut feeling feels like? We equate that with children to animals and the gut instinct that animals have to keep them safe and they get it every time. They understand it. We call it the uh-oh feeling. And helping them focus on how to develop an adult safety net and implementing four safety rules. We use our hand as an interactive way to teach children about their net, their hand is their net, and each one of our fingers representing an adult that we can go to that's a trusted person. It's a trusted person. We have our four safety rules that we go through, and we're using interactive activities when working with the children to apply the rules and helping them develop their safety net. When we're doing presentations with children in classrooms, we're also teaching their educators and leaders of their groups to reinforce those skills, help them continue to develop those safety nets. Next slide, please. So the four safety rules are check first. And check first teaches children to check in with the person that's taking care of them. And we focus on that before you're getting into a car, before you accept a gift, before you let someone take your photo, or when there's adults seeking help. And we do a lot of this education with all four of the rules by doing a lot of what-ifs. So we do questions, "Well, what if?" and we play out different scenarios for children and how these rules apply. I always say check first is my favorite because it kind of trumps everything else, right? If you're checking in first with the adult that's taking care of you, all these other things start to fall into place. We teach children that we talk about all touches. So children are asked often to think of touches in a context of, is this a clean and healthy touch? Years ago, as I heard you all reference earlier, stranger danger. So just as we're kind of abandoning the language of stranger danger, we're also abandoning the language of good touch, bad touch, for a number of reasons. And we really help children understand, is this a clean and healthy touch? So all touches is the focus with children because, you know, there are times to keep the children clean and healthy and safe that adults and people that they trust may have to look and touch their private parts. And so helping them understand that we can talk about all of those touches. I get lots of laughter when I'm talking to kids about changing diapers. And doesn't somebody need to change the diaper to keep the kids healthy and safe? And they're like, "Oh, yeah." I'm like, "It's not a secret, right? We can talk about the poofy diaper." And the light bulbs start to go off. They start to understand, as opposed to the "nobody ever touches you" when we know that that's not reality. Next rule is we tell to get help. So we teach children the difference between tattling versus telling, which is really important because especially for young children, they've been taught by everyone around them. "I don't want to hear the tattletale. I don't want to hear tattletaling." And so we teach them the difference between tattling, to get someone in trouble, and telling to get help is to get someone out of trouble. And the last rule that we focus on is no secrets. So we educate the children about the difference between secrets versus surprises. So we're not out here to ruin anybody's 50th wedding anniversary or surprise birthday party on Friday night. We talk about the fact that there's a huge difference between keeping secrets from the adults that take care of us or a surprise, that's something that's healthy, safe, exciting, and we all know when we're going to share that. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned earlier, there's two presentation versions. One for children, and that's preschool through sixth grade. And the other is for adults, and it's caretakers, and really anyone in the community that interacts or works with children. You know, I may be biased, but I'd say that anyone, really as an adult, should have this knowledge and experience this presentation, even if you're a neighbor in a community. We all have a role in child protection. Next slide, please. So locally, in our county, we've done a ton of presentations in a variety of settings. When Empower Me first started, it was identified through staff at our CAC at a national conference as a resource to bring locally. And we really developed that as a grassroots community initiative. So DSS has maintained the lead, but it is very much a community-supported program. And so we deliver that at no cost to the schools, in churches. We've held open community sessions, recreational organizations, many nonprofits. We've delivered it within the detention center, directly with our clients, our parenting groups, childcare programs. I've been in backyards of local neighborhoods. So really, the populations are endless. And we've also done a lot of consulting in other counties and helping them develop their programs and bring Empower Me to their schools and their community as well. Next slide, please. So impact, that's what we're all interested, right? And anyone that knows any work in prevention knows that measuring impact of prevention programs is especially challenging. And one of the ways to measure impact, certainly for our program, we look a lot at our delivery and how many people we're able to reach. And I think, as you saw just in our CAC stats, that as we continue to educate the community, both adults and children, reporting will rise. And so numbers rising when you're thinking, you know, prevention, you know, sometimes it's hard to wrap our minds around. But that is indeed what we're looking for, is more reporting and more opportunities to keep children safe and help families heal. So we began presenting, doing presentations in the county in 2015. We've delivered it to approximately 600 adults and 1,200 children. During the height of the pandemic, virtual presentations were conducted. We actually had the founder of the program record a child-specific presentation just for our county, entering in some county-specific information and resources into that presentation as well. We do maintain, with the financial support of both the county and the local department, a license to have that county-specific presentation as a virtual resource. And there's also a virtual resource for adult education as well. We have resumed in-person presentations and live virtials. So just recently, we did a live virtual training with the staff at Chapel District Elementary School. And this year, I got really lucky to get right in that window of we think we were getting out of the pandemic. So I was able to do in-person presentations to all of the first graders in the county through our partnership with Talbot County Public Schools. This has been a wonderful partnership. It's in an effort to be in compliance with Aaron's Law. MSD Inc. incorporated several requirements into their health curriculum. And our partnership with TCPS has been from the very beginning of the program. And even the implementation of the mandate of Aaron's Law has helped, bringing Empower Me has helped the school meet those standards. So the school welcomes us in. We've been presenting to all first-grade classes, and it will continue. We've also done, at St. Peter and Paul, we've had an opportunity pre-pandemic to do the entire elementary school, both pre-K all the way through sixth grade. They delivered the presentation virtually last year with hopes to do in-person again, perhaps in the spring this year. We continue to do outreach in the community to offer these sessions, both virtual, in-person, in any setting, and prerecorded, that's safe for the community and that organization. We have several scheduled for next month as well. So fingers crossed we'll be live and in-person in a safe setting. Just kind of close here. This is our recent photo of Bill Keswick, myself, Mr. Shields, and a student intern in one of the first-grade classrooms and holding up our CAC fans. And we actually use those in the classroom as an interactive activity, turn them around and have each child write a name on each of the fingers, and the teachers can reinforce that. We provide books and coloring books, as you see photographed. So all of the support that we've gotten from the county council and the local department is what makes this possible. It makes us be able to deliver this presentation at no cost and provide all the additional resources and supports to really help continue the education and prevention efforts in our county. And I feel honored to be a part of this project and really appreciate the opportunity to share this with all of you. I know I've spoke with some of you in other areas before about Empower Me and would just offer today to all of the council members and anyone else observing, if anyone is interested. Next slide, please. In having a presentation in its entirety, we are happy to do that virtually, recorded, and in-person. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Paris. You could also use this information to get in touch with us if any member of the council would be interested in coming to the Children's Advocacy Center and having a tour of the facility and learning more about what we do there. I would absolutely welcome hearing from any one of you at any time, and we would make that happen. So thanks again for the opportunity this evening.
Once again, Linda, thank you, and thank you, Paris. That was a great presentation and a lot of information. And we're so blessed to have people like you to work and really hard to make a difference in kids' lives and people's lives. So, council, Corey?
Well, yeah, thanks, Mr. Callahan. Linda, always a pleasure to hear from you. And Paris, good seeing you again. Paris and I were together about two months ago handing out holiday food baskets for the foster parents at the parking lot of the Department of Social Services. It was my pleasure to be out there with her and some of her foster parent staff to do that. Yeah, but the CAC, one of the best-run programs we have in the county, probably not wildly known, but it serves a very important part of the whole criminal justice process when it comes to this most viable, vulnerable, I should say, vulnerable population. And when they are taken advantage of, the CAC is here to provide a service not only to those victims, but also to the families of those victims as well. So I've always been a big supporter of the CAC. I was glad to see that it landed back on its feet after being removed from Shore Health Building last year. The current location is wonderful. It is a perfect location, I believe, for it to continue on its work. And so I wish them well in all that they do. It's very unfortunate, it's very unfortunate that we have to have a CAC. It really is. We wish that we did not have to have this type of operation. But unfortunately, we do. And I'm just so happy that we have good people working there who are very compassionate and very knowledgeable about their job and do it in a way, as Linda pointed out, that these very small and vulnerable individuals won't feel that they're being stigmatized and put under too much of a microscope. So again, thank you very much for the presentation, and very well done.
Thank you, Mr. Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Pack.
So this is one of those things that you wish you never even knew about. And, you know, unfortunate that it exists. And I remember the first time meeting a nurse who just handled these kinds of cases and thinking, how difficult and challenging her life must be. I just, I can't thank the people who step into these roles enough, that you are providing just an amazing service. But I also feel that during this COVID time, from what I've been reading, it's become much worse. You're having children watching other children because parents have to go to work, and they're not old enough to be doing it, but you got to pay the electric bill, you know, and pay rent. And just a lot of terrible things have been happening. Mental health is always on the forefront of my mind. And I greatly appreciate all of these types of facilities and workers around. I would love to have a tour of it. Hopefully, maybe just a virtual one. You know, if you want to walk through with a phone, I'm more than happy to watch that. And I'm going to shoot you an email afterwards with maybe a couple other organizations I think we might be able to connect with to get in front of some more kids. So thank you very much, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. DiVillio. We'd welcome speaking with any organization that's interested and giving you a virtual tour.
I'll chime in here and express my appreciation for the tour that I did receive during your open house last October and learning more about this program, which I guess, as you explained, is necessarily behind the scenes or low visibility, not the sort of thing that you can hang a big sign up for, given the confidentiality that is needed for those who are needing the services. But this further presentation is helpful on top of that. And I thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher.
And I'll say thank you, like all of my colleagues. And it's always amazing to me the talent that is behind services like yours and the compassion that you have for children, whether, or if it's hospice, you know, for seniors or people that are going through those types of things. You have to have a special heart to do this kind of work. And I just want to thank you for having that heart and the staff and the people that are working on that. Being able to share that and have so much compassion is, it is a gift. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. You're right, it's almost a calling. And we have a wonderful team that puts their heart and soul into the work serving these children and their families and helping them heal. So thank you for recognizing that.
Okay, so thank you, Linda. Like you said, everybody can't say enough how blessed we are to have you guys and your team and your services and stuff and helping Talbot County. You know, you and Paris have really done a great job tonight. You know, we really thank you. And council's always here to help you and always there, willing, and to watch your back. And we're there for you.
Great, thank you, President Callahan. We've appreciated the opportunity and certainly appreciate the kind words that you've all provided this evening.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And congratulations on the awesome audit.
Exactly, we needed it. We needed it. All right, guys, thanks a lot. Okay, council? Let's move on to eligible votes. Council has two resolutions eligible for votes. Madam Secretary, could you read the first resolution into the record, please?
Resolution number 308, a resolution to rescind adoption of resolution number 281, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, the plan, to reclassify and remap portions of certain real property located in the town of Trapp, Maryland, associated with the Lakeside Plan Unit Development, the Lakeside Project, formerly known as Trapp East, further described as Tax Map 54, Parcel 304, Tax Map 55, Parcels 14, 15, 17, 19, 44, 65, 83, and 85, and Tax Map 59, Parcel 4, the total area consisting of 865 acres, more or less, the property from S2 and W2, areas where improvements or extensions to existing or construction of new community, multi-use, or shared sanitary facilities are programmed for progress within three to five years, to S1 and W1, areas served or to be served by community, multi-use, or shared sanitary facilities which are existing, under construction, or have immediate priority status, to amend the plan to add certain water and sewer capital projects related to the Lakeside Project and existing systems[1676.24] for the fiscal years 2020 through 2030, and to amend the plan to update the narrative description in the plan relative to the Lakeside Project and existing systems as amended without prejudice.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good job. Vice President Lesher? For discussion?
Uh, thank you. And I know that we do not yet have in our packet an opinion on Resolution 308 from the Planning Commission. And there's an opportunity for that to happen at the Planning Commission's meeting in February. And I think that it's important that we have that information before us, before proceeding on this. And so I would, I would propose that we defer voting on this until, until that opportunity has passed.
So, I've got a question. What are we hoping to accomplish with this? So if, if we send it back to the Planning Commission, we're asking the Planning Commission to see if rescinding 281 fits into the comp plan?
That we are asking them for their, given, given the revised information and the new information that has come to light, does this, is this supported by the comprehensive plan? Yes, absolutely.
So I'm confused. What are, what are we asking them to fit? That to, that, that we would want to reverse the act, to see if the reversed action that would have already been in the comprehensive plan?
Well, this is, this is, does this change the comprehensive water and sewer plan comport with the, the county's comprehensive plan, its plan for development and its impact on, on that, on this part of the county?
I'm confused. But what specifically in this do they need to address?
So...
This is rescinding 281. Why would we ask the Planning Commission to rescind 281? When we could, we could put something better together and ask them opposed to what? Because let's, let's, let's remember the issues with this, right? Our Office of Law said that rescinding 281 wouldn't do anything. And that's going to be the same legal recommendation that's provided to the Planning Commission. And it seems to me we're just following along with confusing the general public and not addressing any issues. I want to know what, what would the Planning Commission on this document, what would they be reviewing? That, that involves a comprehensive plan? Because it, to me, it, I don't see why, why we would be asking their opinion if we should be rescinding this.
So there is...
Are there, are there issues in here? Right in the title, for example, we've heard evidence that, that perhaps the title of 281 was erroneous, was in fact this property indeed, S2 and W2, when the maps in the, in the comprehensive water and sewer plant don't represent it that way.
Why would the Planning Commission be revealing that?
Let me, let me take a shot at that. Okay, so in November, the Planning Commission gave an opinion on Resolution 281 itself. And before the adoption of 281 in August 2020, when, when it passed by the county council, was there the authority to have new development connected to the plant? And did, the question is whether MDE issued those permits properly. We do have new information that needs to be considered. And there are a few steps to take. One, and the Planning Commission does have the authority. We can't pass something that they don't approve. Now, I understand your question. You're saying, well, this is a negative. This is, this is, this is rescission, okay? But they, there is another resolution, obviously, that I, three of us introduced last month, that'll have an amendment on it, you know, when we get to it this evening, that would make sense if they were to review both of them together at that same meeting. So to have them comment on 301, 308, because again, maybe just rescinding 281 may or may not do something. However, I have had extensive conversations with MDE. And just the fact that they have overturned 281 in November, that is a huge statement to MDE that may affect the permit procedure for the spray irrigation permit that this, the discharge permit that they're going for. Us needing to follow what the Planning Commission's recommendations are, we are not allowed, again, not allowed to pass something without an affirmative vote of three members of the Planning Commission. So I think that this puts some clarity on it if they take an official position on it. And then along with, like you said, doing something else, which again is Resolution 313, to take a proactive step on it. So while we may not officially need it, it does make sense, at least in my mind, to, if they're, if we're going to be sending 313 to them, which I assume we're going to be doing in a little while, to go ahead and let them officially make a statement on Resolution 308, which is, makes more sense than what they did on 281. But I think all three of them kind of go together hand in hand to figure out what is, what it is the county council, along with the Planning Commission, you know, need to do to meet water quality and whether or not things were, whether or not they had that ability. And there are, there are, you know, there are some questions about how it was classified and whether that permit discharge was properly issued and what will happen. This is more what will happen with the MDE. And again, I've had extensive conversations with them. Mr. Lesher joined me on one last week. And they are right now reviewing all of the, I believe they got 3,700 comments back in that October meeting and as long as the public comment was open. So they are, they are looking to the council. So I think that we need to give them every piece that they need to help them make this decision on this permit, new permit, or whether it's a new permit or whether it is a, not a reissuance. Doesn't matter. The decision that the MDE is going to be making, they need to have all these pieces in, in place. And it certainly doesn't hurt anything.
I think this absolutely confuses because they gave us all the information, the Planning Commission gave us all the information to vote on 281. I have not received anything from the Planning Commission saying, I'm sorry, we, we made mistakes. All of this information was wrong. I haven't...
Because I don't think they think the information's wrong. I mean, they've got this, they, they did. They changed their mind in November on 281. They absolutely...
So, and, and yeah, I'll be hap, let's address that. I'll be happy to address that as well. So I've spoken with two of them who've told me that the plant's failing. Can anybody tell me what the pass fail test is called?
So let's talk about the plant and you...
I want to know what's passing and failing, if there is a test, because it...
There have been violations, MDE will tell you, there have been violations in the past. And part of the thing that you need to understand is there are three levels. I thought there was just BNR and ENR. But apparently there is something called BIOLAC. And BIOLAC, BIOLAC is not even up to the same standard as a BNR. So let's call it maybe good, better, best. And we have standards that we have to meet with TMDLs. And then the, the best way to do that is to treat it with ENR technology. We have the ability, the, the technology exists to have connections to an ENR, whether it's through spray irrigation, whether it's through an upgraded trap wastewater treatment plant, or through some temporary modular type of component. Reframe, re, re, reiterate your question, sorry. Oh...
What's the name of the test that passes or fails?
The name of the test, who cares what the name of the test is?
I agree, because they made that, their decision based off of it failing.
Okay. There were violations. MDE is going to tell you there were violations. Okay, so the reason I was telling you about the three different types of wastewater treatment plants is because a BIOLAC has a much lower standard. It doesn't have as high a bar to reach. That doesn't mean that a too high a level of nutrient, phosphorus nitrogen, is going out and being, going out into La Trap Creek or any other impaired waterway. And we want to treat it to ENR standards. We have the ability to do that immediately. And so just because it's not quote unquote, if it's not in violation today, that doesn't mean, mean that it needs a standard that it should. It's not even BNR technology, let alone ENR technology. So when people talk about the fact that it's not, is or is not in violation, you're comparing it against a much lower standard than an ENR plant.
Well, you're also, well, in that regard, should we sell all the dump trucks and just push snow with Priuses? You know, there's a facility there and it is in compliance. I have the report right here from the Maryland Department of the Environment showing it's been in compliance. November, in compliance. October shows compliance. September shows compliance. August shows compliance. July shows compliance.
With a lower standard and we have to clean...
They were there. MDE was there today. And...
We have to clean up TMDLs and we have to pay per pound for nitrogen, phosphorus, nutrients, all of those things. And there are two higher levels going out into the impaired waterways of which that...
Not compliant if it was too high coming out of the facility, right?
If you have 100 milligrams of nitrogen coming out, that that is what comes out, and I'm making up a number, okay, I'm just trying to talk in round numbers, coming out of a BIOLAC plant, but a ENR plant would be 10 milligrams, okay, technically it's in compliance, but it's still discharging 100 milligrams as opposed to 10 milligrams. So it's in compliance, but it's still a lousy standard.
And I'm not saying that we can keep that facility there forever, but it's in compliance. And we keep, I keep hearing people saying that it's failing and that it's not doing what it should be doing. And it is doing what it should be doing.
If you read the developer's documents, it says they have every intention of connecting things to ENR technology. You can go back 15 years and that is what the document says, to ENR technology. And they have, they're not, they're not connecting to ENR. They're going to be connecting to a substandard type plant. And we have the ability to fix that and we'll talk about that later.
Point of order, Mr. Callahan, if I, if I may.
Yep, no problem. Mr. Pak, is it, uh, let's, let's go ahead and...
Point of order. But the question, the question before, and I, and I will call that, I will ask the chair to call the vote on 308 this evening. And, and let me say this before I ask the chair to take that action. It, it is to say this, but it's, it's not about the type of system that Trap has and whether it's in compliance or not. The, the, whether or not the system is in compliance, and it's a system that is approved system is, is a state regulatory action. That's the state of Maryland, not Talbot County, first of all. So whether it's an ENR, BNR, MBR, lagoon system, BIOLAC system, really is not, in our purview, is not really worth us going through those discussions this evening. But to, to Mr. DiVillio's earlier point, let, let me say this. 308 is, is a county council legislative action out of to rescind a previous resolution. It does not have any purview before the Planning Commission at all, at all. There's no reason that, that it should have been even remotely suggested that it go to the Planning Commission, much less that they have any purview over a council decision. They do not, they do not rule on whether or not the council will rescind a resolution. They do not. So this is just a political ploy, in my opinion. It's kicking the can. It is trying to use a invalid action of the Planning Commission because members of this council know it's loaded in their, in their favor, to, to stand behind and say, oh, the Planning Commission voted that, uh, uh, we should, uh, uh, go with 308. And then say, we can't, we can't do anything. We, we gotta rescind. No, it's a political ploy. That's all it is. 308 has nothing to do with the Planning Commission, period. It is the decision, as, as you have said many, many times, Mr. Callahan, we were elected to do a job. This is your job this evening. Your job is to decide whether or not to pass 308, this resolution, based on as it's written or not, period. That's the job you were elected to do. Now, you've been told by your county attorney, whom you've hired, who has a law degree, who has, who has, who has stated multiple times in public that you cannot rescind 203, I'm sorry, you cannot rescind 281. There, you cannot unring a bell. Once a sound has admitted from the bell, it's gone. So to try to say that now you can go back and redo this, you can't. 281 has already been enacted, has already been sent to MDE, MDE has already accepted it, and is already, already had been incorporated into the county's comprehensive plan, which, which MDE has the authority over. They accept the plan and they have, and they have approved that, that change. So this, this is just a maneuver. It's a ploy. The county council has gotten in trouble with this before, back in 2005, when it tried to impede his power on the town of Trap and tried to rescind a previous plan in 2002. And MDE slapped out, slapped the council's hand then and said, no, we won't accept your amendment of that plan. So we're, we're going back full circle 20 years ago and trying to impose onto a, a sovereign entity its right to govern its, its wastewater. And so 281 has been approved. The property, the property is split zone based on 281. It was S2, W2. Look, when I came onto this council, I was told the property was all in S2 and W2. Your, your county engineer, whom you pay, whom you pay, who has several degrees, have told you the property was S2, W2. And still, because some other guy down the street says, no, it wasn't, it was unprogrammed, you believe him. Why are you paying Ray Clark? You might as well let him go. Why are you paying him? He's told you multiple times, it was S2, W2. But you want to listen to the guy down the street who says, I'm programmed? I, 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 I don't get it. I don't get it. So, to try to, this, this is a ploy. Mr. Chair, I would ask that you call the vote on, on 308 this evening. It has no reason to go before the Planning Commission. They do not rule on rescension, period. They do not. They have no authority to tell this county to rescind a previously approved resolution, period. This, this is just a ploy.
It is not...
You were hired to do a job. The job is to make these tough decisions.
Okay, I'm going to jump in and correct a couple of things that were said. Number one, if people don't, aren't ready to vote and they want to wait, it's always been a quote unquote gentleman's agreement, even though I am not a gentleman, but to...
We're not replaying this game tonight.
To respect that. It's not a game, because when you...
Mr. Pak, let, let her talk.
When you want to, when you want to hold a vote, you want to hold, when you want to hold off on a vote, we respect that. And when somebody else wants to, it doesn't always work that way, but that's not...
But there's justifiable reasons.
That's not my point.
Not a ploy, not a ploy tactic to hide, try to hide behind the Planning Commission, but has no authority over this. It's a ploy.
I know how I'm going to vote. Okay, but let me correct something. Trap or the developer does not have the authority to connect or do this without our blessing. And they had, that's why 281 exists. You can sit there and you can chuckle, but that is the truth. They had to come to us in December, I believe, December of 2019, to ask for permission to get this wastewater discharge permit. That is a fact. And if we didn't do that, then they weren't going to be allowed to continue with this project.
That is not a fact. That is not a fact. That is not a fact.
You don't have to argue with me on point. Now, let me finish. 281, if it, the Planning Commission has gone against that, then we didn't have the authority to approve 281. And because they have turned it over, we do have to pay attention to that. I have talked to people at MDE and it does mean something. What the Planning Commission did in November does mean something. I talk to MDE every week and I know what they're reviewing and I know what some of the people are thinking. And it does mean something. Our county attorney is not completely correct on this matter. And so if the Planning Commission, and maybe we don't need to send it to them, maybe them simply making their statement, their decision on 281 in November is enough information that we really, our hands pretty much are tied. Because, for example, on 313, which is upcoming, as written, they didn't approve it. And then...
What decision on 281 in, in December? What decision are you talking about?
And it's in your packet.
281 was, was, was approved two years ago. What are you talking about?
They rescinded that...
They, they, they don't have the power to rescind. They don't, it shouldn't have even been on their agenda. They do not have the power to rescind 281, period.
May I finish my point on 281? Mr. Pak, you're incorrect. And I would like to bring up another point, if you will let me finish. We have had certainly a lot of comments from the public and also from the attorney representing the developer. And he has his case to state and other people have their case to state. And you cannot reply all to your council members and violate the Open Meetings Act. And what you said, you repeated again for the third time tonight about the municipality having their autonomy, not on the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. They had to come to the county council, 100% fact, to ask for permission and the blessing, the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. You can sit there and shake your head with your...
They're, they're not asking for the council's permission. We are not, we are not their big brother. They come to us...
Okay, I'm going to finish my point and then I will be done with this if you will stop interrupting me because I'm tired of this being an argument.
Stop telling these mistruths. They don't come to us for permission for their Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. They do not.
MDE, go ahead. Go talk to secretary and the people working for MDE. They absolutely do. We have complete authority over our Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. It doesn't matter what Trap or the developer want. I'm not saying that I'm not in favor of having some development out there. That is not what this is about. But they can't do it without us. So when 281 got passed with quite probably some inaccurate information that deserves to be looked at again, which is what happened, and the Planning Commission then changes it to another vote, we do have to take action. And I have been told... And I have been told that if the, this goes, the planning commission goes to the attorney general, we lose. They're going to side with the planning commission. We cannot do it without them. We have to pay attention to what happened and what the rules are with, if something is found uh, in line with our comprehensive plan or not. If they don't, we're not allowed to pass it. So we have to take some form of action. And if we do something that is contrary to what the planning commission recommendation is and you have a dispute between the county council and the planning commission in a situation like this on whether something is, um, in line with the comprehensive plan, the attorney general is gonna side with the planning commission. So this isn't about some dude down the street and his opinion. You gotta do all of the research to the facts of this and we have to take this very seriously. And out of everything that we have ever voted on in Talbot County, this is the single largest issue that we have to take very seriously and you have to take personalities out of it. And what I was going to say was it was completely inappropriate for you to reply to Mr. Showalter and, in my opinion, violate the Open Meetings Act and I need to...
Well, let, well, let, and it started making false, so let's stick to the facts we're talking about here tonight, if, if we may, if, if we may. So, so, so let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read from that document since, since you brought it up.
Thirty more seconds.
From that document since you brought it up several times. Now, the county council in 2002 tried to do this exact same thing that you're talking about. They, they, un, un, under the guise that they could control, they had the power to tell TRAP what to do. And that TRAP had to come to the county for permission dealing with its own wastewater and sewer plan. They are a sovereign municipality. So the council introduced Resolution 2, uh, uh, 126 in an effort to amend a 2002 plan to undo the process made with respect to a discharge permit, delay the timeline and capital improvements, and to establish policy changes between the county and the town to further impede upon the town's progress. Resolution 126, which was ultimately adopted by the council in November 9, 2005. However, however, M D E rejected the county's attempt to de-list the lakeside wastewater treatment from the 2002 plan. M D E stated, M D believes that the desires and the intentions of the municipality within which the waste, the, the water and sewers improvement will occur has significant weight. It is M D E's interpretation that Resolution 126 would adversely affect the town of TRAP and impede the ongoing public process within the town. Therefore, it disapproved the amendment known as Resolution 126. Try to do exactly what you were saying. So it's been, we, we've been down this road before and M D has said, no, you do not have the authority.
And they are looking at that and they think that they may have erred in that judgment.
Well, and, and until we see something different, Mrs. Price, we're gonna go with what's on record.
No, no, there's also documents that I read that also in our packet. And there are a ton of documents in our packet. So let's go ahead and let someone else go now.
Okay, all right.
Documents from M D E saying, we've made all these mistakes. Did I not get the letter from the M D E apologizing for all their mistakes and lies and illegal actions? Did anybody else get that?
They don't exist, they don't, they don't exist. Yeah, they don't exist.
Okay, so M D E did not, did not apologize and admit that they acted illegally. I take, I reach out to information and, and you're not the only one who can call M D E. I have, I've got a good relationship with an individual up there who's on this and has been hailing it ever since, uh, he started working for M D E 20 some years ago. Uh, I, I take all the information I can and I make a vote on that. And if there was illegal information, somebody lied and it's false, I, I've been asking for that. And nobody's been able to supply me a document that they gave me when I voted on 281 that was unethical, illegal, or incorrect factually. I have yet to receive that document. So I'm gonna stand by my vote and I'm gonna continue working with all of these groups to actually make a difference and clean up the water. I'm not gonna rescind this, send it back to the planning commission for what? For the, to hope that they can invent some kind of better wastewater treatment facility? Is that, is that what we're looking for here? No, we're not sending this back to them over that. We're not trying to get them to invent anything. It's, there's a, a plant coming and there's a development that's coming. And we need to recognize that, accept it, and make it the best that it possibly can. That's our job.
That's great, because there's E N R technology that exists today that they could hook up to. They don't need to hu- hook up to a...
And rescinding, rescinding this is not gonna fix that, right? It's not gonna immediately put an E N R plant there. So listen, I have voted down things before that was just bad legislation and come back with the correct, proper way to do it. And that's where I am right now. Not this. I, I'm voting this one down. I'm a hard no here.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes, Mr. Lashaw.
If I may.
Yep.
A year and a half ago, the planning commission was asked and did provide an opinion on Resolution 281. Based on similar information, M D E acted preliminarily. Given new information that came across, the courts ordered M D E to start over as new. We have not been so ordered, uh, but this is our opportunity to, to do precisely that in light of the same new information. Resolution 308 is based on the same material as resolution, or the same subject matter, new information, uh, as Resolution 281. It is therefore entirely appropriate, since the, uh, planning commission gave us their opinion on the initial Resolution 281, that the planning commission should, in light of this new information, render an opinion on Resolution 308. And so we have the opportunity to do that. Uh, they will be able to act on that, uh, or review that in their meeting the first Wednesday in February, which will be prior to this council's next meeting. Um, a, a, a short delay in the vote on this uh, to garner that information, which is simply parallel to what we've asked for before on the same subject matter, is entirely reasonable.
I, I would completely disagree. I, I believe that M D E was told to open up public comment again and they did. And you went along with this, you, you followed the petitioner, you allowed him to add additional comment. You add, allowed the public to make additional comment and they have. And that's all that was needed. The lawsuit went away. It's time to close this and it's time to move forward with the project and actually make a difference. Sending this back, back to the planning commission does not do it. I don't see anything in here that, that justifies that. If you want to send something else to them, I would be willing to listen to that.
Okay, so I, I've been, I've been sitting here listening. So, so I, I look at this both ways. I've talked to a lot of people. I've also talked to M D E. I've talked to TRAP. Talked to all the players involved, talked to the planning commission. You know, my, my, my thought was, you know, Mr. Pak and, and Mr. Davilio, I, I, I fully understand where you're, you're, you're headed. I, I, I really do. You know, I, I don't know if this makes a difference one way or the other. I think you're right. I think you're right, Frank. There, there's, there's a lot in here in rescinding this that we, we feel like is gonna make a difference or not. Um, you know, hearing you guys tonight, back and forth, everybody's got their really good points, okay? Everybody wants to be heard. So when, when, when you, when you look, when you look down at us, there's confusion. We've been the last couple of months, um, with, with people in front of us, um, claiming, um, stuff was done unlawful. You know, and I, and I listened, you know? I, I listened and, and gave the people the respect to, to, to understand where they're coming from. And there's some, some serious allegations that come out of this that the M D E was accused of doing something, okay? Um, and you're right, I haven't, I haven't seen anything. You know, Mr. Davilio, you're right, I, I haven't seen anything. I, I don't think you have either. Um, thi- this is, you know, all this back and forth, you know? You, you know, my, my thoughts, and I, and I know you don't agree with this, my thoughts were, you know, why not give an opportunity to the players? TRAP, M D E, the planning commission, um, the developers? Why don't we give them, um, a seat at the table in a week, two weeks? You know? I, I don't see where that harms anything. I think it might clear things up a little bit for the public and us. You know, I, I, I know, Mr. Pak, you're passionate about what you've said. The lawyer has told us, um, you know, that he agrees with, this doesn't do anything. I'm, I'm, you, you know, it's, it's, it's not like, you know, I really want to vote on something and, and you, and you're saying that, you know, I've always said, hey, you gotta step up to the plate and vote. It, it's, in, in this particular situation, I'd like to just to see the players at the table so we can have, so we can kind of build off the discussion in the last half hour that we've talked about. So why don't we have players at the table? Maybe they can clear some of this up? Maybe it doesn't? May- maybe it doesn't? You know, we gotta vote on it and vote it up or down. Um, but it, it, it just makes sense to me that at this stage, with, with everything that's been said, every, and, and all the, all the, all the social media and, and all the meetings we were at, I don't, I don't really see harm in, in having a meeting and get together. I, I, I really don't. May- maybe that's not what everybody wants to do here. But communication means everything. I think each one of us are right. Each one of us are right. I want you to understand that. Each one of us are right. We're fighting amongst ourselves and we shouldn't be doing that. What we should be doing is keeping a balanced and open mind of, we're, 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 we're making decisions for a, a municipality in a sense, um, that doesn't even have a seat at the table right at this second to talk about it. So, you know, did, did somebody want to say something? So, so I, I just think it's a little premature. I don't see where it'd hurt a week. I've talked to a lot of people, one way or the other, everybody's so passionate about it. You know, Mr. Davilio, Mr. Pak, I, I, hey, I, I, you know, I'd, I'd rather not vote on it right now. I'd rather, and, and it's not, understand this, it, it's not about the vote. It's, it's about hearing the people and it is, it is a big deal to people. I, I, you know, it's been shifted in a sense, and, and, and this is my opinion. It's been shifted into a direction where, you know, it's, it's, it's the plant, then it's the building, do we really want the building? Now, now the plant, you know, is it, is it, is it, you know, is it legal or not legal? There's not one person listening that doesn't want that plant up and running and safe for the environment. There's not one of us, not one of us. And, and look, let's, let's face it, that's gonna happen. That's gonna happen. It's just a matter of moving forward, making sure, and this is how I feel. And I'm trying to get it out. When people are sitting in front of us for four hours making statements and, and, and saying that we have things that are a problem and, you know, I, I kind of feel like it's not fair for the other side to defend that. And, and that's my opinion, you know? And, and, and once I got my head clear of what's in front of us and what somebody's telling us, you know, I think in a court of law, both sides should be heard and they do, and they are heard. So, so some of the, the planning commission to decide, it's, it's, it's on the council's shoulders. Mr. Pak, you're 100% right. At the end of the day, the council makes the decision. You're right. I'm, I'm gonna agree with you. You know, the planning commission is a vario- uh, uh, they, 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 they tell us what they think it should be. They do. They advise us. That's what they do. And I've talked to Mr. Counsel. Mr. Counsel has been great with me the last couple of weeks. Just bring him up to speed. And I, and, and look, all the council members, or all the planning commissions, um, are very good people. Everybody's passionate about, there's five of them, five of us, there's 10 people here. And we, we got, we really gotta get on the same, on the same train on this because it, it's coming and we want what's best for TRAP. That's what needs to be said. We want what's best for TRAP. We want a healthy environment and we can all work together on this. It's, it's, it's amazing, it's amazing that we don't want to try to shift things and get together, get at the table, work this stuff out, you know? All, all the amendments, all the resolutions, all the bills, all, all that stuff there, why aren't we at the table? It, it's fascinating to me that we're all, we're all leaders here and we want to, we want to do a, a quick vote, you know? And, and it's just to me, it's a little bit bigger than that. It's a little bit more of trying to get together. I, I don't have the, I don't have the, the golden egg here, what to, and, and I, I, I don't have the, the, the solution. But I know one thing, my guts telling me to get people at the table and, and, and make sure that what everybody has said tonight has some truth to it. Everything does. You know, everybody that's here has, has a, has a well, well-groomed point. Mr. Pak, I applaud you, were prepared for all your information and I understand that. You know, and you think you're right and you are right on a lot of things, okay? You are, okay? And Frank, same, same with you. Same with you. And look, and I, and I don't mean this i- in a bad way, but, you know, we, we really need to all be on the same wavelength on this. We, we really do. And I would, I would really, really like for you guys to consider, because you're probably not gonna change your mind on your vote, but I would ask you, I would ask you to slow it down for a week or two to get people to the table. You might end up at the same thing. You, you really might.
Mr. Callahan, with, with, with all due respect, with all due respect, Resolution 308 is before the council tonight for vote. I would ask you as the chair to call the vote. If you want to sit down with whomever you want to sit down with tomorrow, next week, you're well welcome to do that. We had a public hearing on this. You had Mr. Watson go on for, for hours at length on this. So you have heard, you do have the opportunity, even after this evening, if you so choose. I was down at TRAP just the other day, meeting, meeting with Nick and, 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 and some representative from TRAP. You're well, you, and you were welcome, you were invited to that meeting as well. You were invited, but you didn't show up.
Because I had to work now. So somebody had to work.
I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Don't even pull back, you're retired, I'm working, so I don't appreciate you saying that. I don't appreciate saying that.
Well, I'm just saying, there was a meeting, there was hell.
I know it was a meeting, if I could have been there, I would.
I'm just saying, so it's not, it's not like that.
Don't say, don't say I wasn't there. Don't, don't, don't act like I didn't want to be there, so that, that was it.
I didn't say you did, I didn't, okay, I, I, I apologize, I take that back. You, you weren't there. You weren't there.
And that's why you get upset.
Okay, you weren't there. I just said you weren't there, but there, there was a meeting and you weren't there.
And guess what? You know what? Nobody ever told me about a meeting. I had no idea.
So the thing about it is that there, there have, there, there is opportunities.
Are invited to that meeting. I knew nothing about it. And right now, there are three people who want to delay a vote. Myself, Pete, and Mr. Kevin.
The questions before council, I would add. I'm asking the chair to call for the vote as point of order.
Mr. Callahan? I've asked this simply, I started it simply as a courtesy, but I will put it in the form of a motion. I move that we defer voting on Resolution 308.
Do I have a second?
Sorry, I was muted, I seconded it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to defer the motion. Madam Secretary, could I call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
No.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
No.
Okay, so what we're going to do, we're going to put this, we're going to put this on hold?
Let me just say, and I know I don't have, and I didn't think about this before, before we took that vote and is probably moot at this point. But I did ask the chair as a point of order to call this matter to vote and you did not do so, Mr. Callahan.
A four-fifths vote can overrule the chair. It would take a four-fifths vote to overrule the chair's decision.
Well, he didn't call the matter to vote.
And you're, if you wanted to overrule him on that, it takes a four-fifths vote. Calling the question is also requires a supermajority, calling the question, asking him to call the vote, that requires a supermajority for votes.
What's the next action by this council on this?
To hop behind the Planning Commission's unauthorized vote on 308?
Are we sending this to the Planning Commission?
There's nothing to send to the Planning Commission. The Commission has no authority over Resolution 308, none.
We have asked for their opinion now.
When?
I just did, and actually in December.
I would, I would really, I would really love to go back to, you know, to what I asked and I'd like to put everybody at the table. That's what I'd like to do.
Well, call it, I mean, you could, you could have done that months ago. Same way with the statue, you could have done that months ago, the same way. Don't keep on saying you want to do it, you want to do it, do it.
Why would you bring that into it?
I'm just saying, do it, if you want to do it, do it, stop saying I want to do it and do it.
I will, I will, I will within the next couple of weeks, get with staff, put something together so we all can listen to some information and then we'll move forward, we're going to move forward and then we'll vote on this. But we're going to vote on it where I feel like the majority of us, what's going to wait a couple of weeks? It's going to, it might end up the same result, Mr. Pack, you know what I mean, but don't bully me through something. Okay, don't bully me.
Nobody's bullying you, Mr. Callahan, you're saying you want to bring people to the table. This has been on our agenda for over a month. This project has been in the works for over 20 years.
I understand.
So to say that, so say that now tonight, now tonight as a ploy, I want to bring people together, could have been done that.
Not necessarily, we just got all the information, we just.
What information? You've had volumes of information on this for years, what information?
We got. It's been years, it's not been years, we just had new stuff, allegations, that's what you're not understanding.
Allegations, okay.
We've had allegations.
They are not just allegations, there are some things true, some things not true, we're trying to get through and get to the truth so that we do the right thing, but to discredit somebody just because you don't like him is wrong.
And even if, and even if you do, as your county attorney has said, you cannot rescind 281.
That might be true, that might, that might be true.
So all of this is for what?
It might be true and you might.
So all of this is for what? All the waiting and going through all these?
You know what it's for? It's for the safety and health of this community, is what it's for.
Okay.
Okay.
All due respect to our county attorney, he has one attorney's opinion and I have talked to attorney at M D E and that is not necessarily true, so let's let everybody get all that information. I know that they are reviewing all of the background information. Different people at M D E were in charge back then, different administration, and they are sorting through all of these comments and data and information that have been presented to them at the public hearing back in October. Again, 3,700 comments, 2,800 unique comments, it is taking time for them to sort through it. There's, you know, yes, there is dirt moving out there at Lakeside, but there's no actual houses or connections happening right now, so to take a few more weeks and also to consider what's coming up with Resolution 313 and take it as an all-encompassing unit, hopefully is going to solve the problem. And it makes sense for it to all go together and let them look at it all-encompassing rather than just piecemeal. Because if we vote tonight, it might or might not change what we're going to do with 313 and I think it makes sense to do them together so that they are, so they make sense, you don't want to do something that would be opposite to the other resolutions since there are two of them before us right now. So we have called, we're going to, we're going to hold off.
Why don't we just follow the petitioner's request, I don't know if everybody remembers or not, but when he came in, he said, just rescind it without prejudice and let the attorneys figure it all out. Is, is that, is that what we're doing here?
I don't really care what the petitioner wanted, I'm trying to do.
No, that is, that's the action that we have been led to do now. So yes, it does matter because that's what we're doing.
I'll go ahead and call the point of order, Mr. President, we've already voted to hold off on this.
So, okay, so.
The next item.
So, so, Mr. Stan, could you, and Mrs. Morris, could you put on our agenda next week to get all the parties together so we can have a meeting and then hopefully by next meeting, we can take this and put this thing to bed. But I'd like to be able to get in a meeting with everybody on board next week.
Well, I'm not sure that that can happen that quick.
If you want to meet with them, go ahead and meet with them, you don't have to include anybody in that, if you want to meet with them, meet with them.
So just to clarify your request, are you asking staff to set up a work session with council?
That's what I'd like.
We don't need a work session, if he wants to meet with them, he can meet with them.
Department of the Environment, right, we want M D E there, should we go ahead and list off all the players that we want?
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was getting at, I want all the players there, you know, and that's what I wanted. You know, and I don't, you know, Mr. Pack, you don't have to be there, that's fine.
So, we're going to get, we're going to have a meeting with them, but we're going to have the Planning Commission review this and give us a vote on this. Now, after we already meet with them?
So council, I think your vote, your vote on this was to defer.
Yep.
You're only to defer.
To send it to the Planning Commission, so the Planning Commission has time to revise here. So the Planning Commission has to have time to review this and.
I don't think that was part of the vote, was it?
I believe Mr. Lesher did ask for that last, he just mentioned that.
I did not define the purpose.
No, no, that you sent this to the Planning Commission for a decision.
I don't think he said that.
I don't think he said that. Mr. Devilio, December 14th, Ms. Price made a statement about sending these matters back to the Planning Commission and to the Public Works Advisory Board, so it wasn't Mr. Lesher, it was back on the December 14th, you go back and read that transcript. She said something very loosely about, yeah, if you remember. And I think that was the same night that Mr. Anderson came and spoke and said that the Public Works Advisory Board is here to help and she said, yeah, we want your, you know, we want, and then she called to Miguel and said, Miguel, you know, put that on the agenda. So that's, that's, it was very loosely done, it was very loosely done, you know?
Tonight, on the record that he has sent this, right?
And we do have, we do have in our packets a recommendation from the Public Works Advisory Board, so we did let them give us an opinion. They got it done in January, I'm not sure why the Planning Commission didn't get it done at their January meeting. But we do have in our packet a recommendation on 308 from the Public Works Advisory Board. Normally we would ask for opinions from both bodies. And we have already gotten one from the P W A B.
So Mr. Lesher, can you please let me know what has been done and what the timeline of this will be?
Well, the Planning Commission, I believe, is going to be meeting the first Wednesday in February, at which point they can render an opinion on this and Mr. Callahan has separately asked for a council workshop on this. And that will be scheduled as soon as possible, I presume, and that will allow us to move forward.
Wouldn't it make sense that the Planning Commission has all the information before they render a decision? If they were part of that work session?
I agree with that, I agree with that, that's my whole point, to flush all this stuff out. I think you're right, Mr. Devilio, that was my point, to flush all this stuff out. You know, because we have so much in front of us, all I want is some clarification on this stuff, that's really it, you know?
And I would like it right from the horse's mouth.
That's my whole point, that's my whole point, you know what I mean? I don't, I'd rather hear from the horse's mouth on some of this stuff.
Mr. Callahan, President, so I mean, staff will be happy, obviously, to schedule a work session, we just need clarity on who you'd like to invite. You can share that with us tonight or let us know, we'll work to set that work session up.
Well, I.
Give direction to staff to hold off on the Planning Commission review of this document until we've had the work session?
Fine with me.
Well, but.
Why not, why not?
Because you got to figure out whether you can get it done that fast and they only meet once a month. And so you want to defer this now till March if we can't get a workshop set up before the Planning Commission can get together? And I'm not so sure I'm in favor of a workshop, I think all the information is out there, it's a matter of going, of going through it and everybody reviewing, you know, everybody reviewing and all the players reviewing.
There needs to be voices at the table, that's what it needs to be.
Well, you know what? It is the Talbot County Council who holds the decision-making purview of the comprehensive water and sewer plan, it is our plan all by ourselves. And we know what TRAP thinks, we know what the developer thinks, we know what they've written, for goodness sakes, Ryan Showalter sent us a 150-page document.
Yeah, but what he hasn't said, what he hasn't said is what Frank has said, okay? There's nothing there with all this new information that we got, okay, is that true or not?
He chose, actually, I'm going to let Mr. Lesher pick up on this because there, I believe he had a little better insight into the things that Mr. Showalter.
Well, it's, you know.
I'm going to go back to Mr. Price's earlier point, if we can please get through this agenda, we have another matter before vote tonight, which is 311. You can contact Mr. Stan offline and give him the people you want to get to, thank you.
I got you, all right, no problem. Okay, let's move on, council. Madam Secretary, could you read Resolution 311 into the record, please?
Resolution number 311, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Council rules of procedure to clarify certain procedures regarding the adoption of numbered and administrative resolutions, the filing of petitions, the drafting of legislation and the conduct of public hearings and to correct outdated and inconsistent language.
Hey, council? Any comments?
There was a couple of things that I had some issues with before and we got some comments, I'm not sure if this is maybe a little too restrictive on the petition process, not thrilled about that, and the other one was the part where it says it's on page six, that every time you want to, except for requests made in open session, any request by any member of the council to the county attorney to draft proposed legislation shall be in writing and shall set forth the substance of the proposal. It says all other members of the council and the county manager have to be copied on that request. We've never done that before and we've always been, again, in the 11 years I've been here, I don't think anybody has abused that and I don't think that I need to or Chuck needs to or Frank or any of us or a future council needs to notify every single member of the council when you're working on trying to draft some legislation and you're working through it. Because then, you know, you got to get through the bumps, you got to get through the drafts and things like that and then, you know, maybe you don't think that the council's going to agree on it. So I really don't like that paragraph, I think that, again, in 11 years I've been here, nobody has abused the county attorney, hopefully Patrick will agree, he hasn't been with us that long, in drafting proposed legislation and then that legislation does get circulated seven days in advance and I think that is certainly good enough, it is how we've done things in the entire time I've been here, gives all the other council members seven days to review it and then it goes public on the Friday before it gets introduced. So, you know, generally, I think most of these changes are certainly fine, some are just cleanup language. But on that one, I really don't think that every time a council member wants to propose legislation that we have to notify every single other council member. I think it's unnecessary.
This change, if you remember, the way it was worded before is in the read with the strikeout, was that you have to notify at least two council members. And that's so the county attorney wouldn't be overburdened by a council member running to him with legislation that was not going to be supported by two other council members and he goes through the process of drafting it and then it goes, it goes absolutely nowhere.
So it doesn't mean two other council members had to support it, it just mean they had to.
Had knowledge of it and that, so, you're right, right, not to say that they were supporting it, but have knowledge of it.
And then until Mr. Thomas came on board, we never did that, we never did that.
I wouldn't say we never did that, previous councils have done that because I, I, I I know specifically a council member who rose this issue, so I know it has been done in the past. So, but, you know, I was okay with the wording of the way it was before to have at least two members be notified. Notifying the full council may be a bit too much and notifying the county manager. Again, the way it was worded previously, the strikeout there shall include an acknowledgement by at least two other members of council that they are aware of the request. I could live with that, I could live with that.
Mr. Pack, I mean, you just mentioned about being overburdened and you've been here, you know, a couple of years longer than I have and I do think I know to whom you refer and it was before my time, I think it was, you know, and I think that there was a council member 12 or 13 or 14 years ago who maybe did that. But in 11 years, I don't think anybody has ever overburdened, you know, the county attorney, whether it was Tony Cooper Smith or Mike Pullen. So I don't feel the need for either of them, but I certainly think this is overkill. And there have been occasions when at the last minute on a Tuesday, at five minutes to five, all of a sudden something needs to be drafted and you can't get a hold of two other council members, that happened on at least two occasions that I can recall just in the past, you know, six months. And I think we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist as far as having to notify and again, we, until Mr. Thomas came on, not with Mike Pullen, not with Tony Cooper Smith, did we ever notify two other council members before asking the county attorney to draft some type of request. It hasn't been done, I don't think it's been abusive, so I just don't feel the need there. Most of the other changes, I'm perfectly fine with, though.
If I may, to council member Price's point, the language as it's written does say, it shall include, if it's in writing, it shall include an acknowledgement by at least two other members of the council that they are aware, so that that states that if a council member is asking the county attorney to draft something, two other council members under this rule have to say, yes, I'm aware of the request. And I do think it's a bit cumbersome when, it has to be submitted a week in advance if you're, the request is coming in, as council member Price said, at 5 o'clock Tuesday afternoon, they have to scramble to get two other council members to say, yes, I'm aware of it. I think by, you could even simplify this to just say, two other council members shall be copied on the request so that they're aware of it. And that, I think, serves the same purpose without having this need to have to say, yes, they told me, I'm aware of it and I think that would simplify it somewhat.
I agree with that change and for those, you know, this, the proposed language is actually both more transparent because it gets everybody in the loop and less burdensome because it does not require that affirmative response from the two other council members. I thought this was a step forward, actually. But if we want to make it just two other council members, that the point in the revised language, which I support, is simply that
Copy it on it.
That others be notified. Other, other, that, that, that others be notified, not that you have an affirmative acknowledgement.
I can go with that. I can go with that.
And this, this would not preclude any council member from reaching out to Patrick or Mr. Thomas and asking him to research legislation and have an idea of what could be done. Is that?
No, it, it just would say, so if, if, if one of you asks me to draft a, a, a bill or a resolution, it has to be in writing. It doesn't preclude you from saying, hey, can we do this? How would we do something like this? Could we do it by bill or resolution? How would it need to be done? It doesn't affect that. That just falls under leave and research.
And, and I, and I, Mr. DiVillio, I think, too, to, to add to what you were saying, I mean, if, if, if we're gonna ask, if we're gonna ask Mr. Thomas to do something, it would really be nice if they did have, uh, we had, you know, we call each other, so to speak, and had two people aware of it. Um, and, and, you know, so it needs almost be discussed because, in a sense, and, and, and maybe, maybe you can help me with this, um, not waste your time if something's not gonna pass.
No, 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 we have to go through a whole process. So no, you know, you, you, that's wrong. You shouldn't try, I mean, it's all nice if, you know, you've got five council members who are on board before drafting legislation.
I don't mean five, I mean three. You know, some, sometimes, though, Laura, you know, use a little bit of common sense. That's all I'm saying, just a little bit of common sense.
That's predetermined, that's a predetermined outcome, and I don't agree with that. Sometimes somebody, one person has an idea, and you go through a process and you draft it. You know, single members, you know, start the process.
But why not share it? Why not share that?
It's fine, well, we're gonna copy them. But we don't need to get some type of preapproval that people are all on board and everything's always hunky-dory.
Nobody said preapproval. No, nobody said preapproval. I'm, I'm just saying, uh, you know, I'm, all I'm saying, Laura, is it, it could be, you know, cost-effective. That's all I'm saying.
And nobody has abused it in the eleven years I've been here. Um, and, okay, so I think we just came up with two other members shall be copied. You don't have to do the county manager, and I don't know that we have to copy the secretary at that point either. So just copy two other members of council when, at the time, the, the, the actual draft of the, uh, legislation is, is done. I think that's probably a decent compromise.
Okay, any, any other?
This, this would be, this would be an amendment then, so let me get the wording of this amendment corrected then. So it says, uh, uh, if you go back to your strikeout on page six, second paragraph, um, it shall include a copy to at least two of the members. Is that what we're saying? It shall, it shall include a, a copy.
I, I think you could just change it to the, the language stays stricken through, but then the next sentence would read, two other members of the council shall be copied on the request.
So you're saying keep the strikeouts in place, Patrick?
Yes.
And, and give me, give me, give me your amendment, give me the amendment again?
So, and this, this, the added sentence that reads, all other members of the council and the county manager shall be copied on the request? That would be amended to read, two other members of the council shall be copied on the request.
What, what about adding the county manager as well, in case a department head needs to be contacted? Or just for better communication amongst staff?
Wait, I mean, I'm saying, this is all new. We've never done it. It's never been a problem before. I, you know, I think most of us probably would, but I just don't like it being a requirement or a mandate that we have to. I'm sure most council members are gonna have that respect to talk to the county manager about it.
Move Ann County Manager?
You can remove that.
Okay. So, um, the amendment is, is this, uh, to the bill, to the resolution, um, two other members of council shall be copied on the request is the amendment. Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Second, Mrs. Price?
Do you, uh, second question? Next, next sentence, a copy of the quest shall also be filed with the secretary. Is that necessary at the time of the request?
I, I think, I think, I think you want the secretary to be copied for, for, just for record-keeping purposes, yes. She's not gonna do anything with it just, just to record it. Any other changes?
Um, there, I mean, there was a request on petitions, um, is ever, whether or not, it says something now, county, would you look up? Instead of adopting the, saying that you have to cite applicable law with the petition, uh, I think somebody is proposing that you change it to filing a petition on a matter that's within the council's jurisdiction or authority, and not necessarily having, uh, having to cite an applicable law on a petition. Might be a little difficult to try to find a law that they're citing if they want a petition on an issue.
Mrs. Price, just, should, should we ask our council president to call a vote on that First Amendment before we move on to another amendment?
Sounds like a good idea.
Yes. Madam Secretary, could you please, um, call a vote on the amendment that we just, um, discussed, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, just, um, I, I'm not sure I followed that. The, it was, the motion was by, made by Mr. Pack and seconded by Ms. Price. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's okay, thank you. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. And we're back on petitions?
Right, uh, the petitioner has to, to cite applicable law. It might not be a law, or maybe the law doesn't exist yet. So I'm agree, uh, can we just say, um, when, when talking about petitions, that as long as it's a matter that's within our council jurisdiction and authority, rather than having to cite applicable law? What do you think, Mr. Thomas?
My thinking was that the petition should be for something which can actually be petitioned, that there's some authority to petition to the council. So this would avoid, uh, frivolous petitions, uh, on, in matters that, you know, like, let's say, you know, somebody wants to paint the courthouse purple, which clearly is a, a frivolous petition that would just waste the council's time. Um, that there would be some underlying authority for petitioning a matter to the council. So, for example, uh, there's proceed, there's a process in the code for petitioning the council on creating a, a, a streetlight district. Um, so that was, that was my, my thinking there. Um, but you can certainly expand it if, expand the authority if you so choose.
Is there, is there a way to say, shall cite the applicable law? Or something that gives a little bit more broadness without getting into the frivolous stuff? Can you think of another petition there?
To cite the authority or other grounds for the petition, something to that effect that just may bring some clarity to the, the, on, and the grounds under which it's, it's brought? I don't know that necessarily resolves the underlying concern.
I, I think as, as worded, Mrs. Price, is, is not gonna be unduly, um, burdensome on a petitioner if they're, um, requesting something that's within the purview or scope of the council, either by resolution or by county, um, county bill. Um, certainly, um, that's gonna fall within that, that our purview to act upon. So I, I don't know whether watering, watering this down, um, would be, would be necessary.
I, I, I agree with Mr. Pack on that point. I'm, I'm not sure that this creates an undue burden or barrier.
Anything else we see?
I mean, there's some things, and saying, you can't do anything else for eighteen months. It says nobody can be added, says nobody can be added to the petition. I mean, once it's filed, what difference does it make if, you know, there's additional name? Now, we don't, do we need to be updated on the additional names every, every three days or every three minutes? No, we don't. But why would you prevent somebody from being able to sign on, um, and show their support if another petition? Now, granted, we've never had petitions until this year, okay? So again, are we holding a clock when someone's asking us what time it is? But why would you prevent somebody from being able to, um, add, add their name so that when, you know, if and when we consider it, you know, it might have started with fifty people and now there's two hundred? Well, I mean, why would we prevent people from being able to, to do that? So, I mean, everybody's probably read the memo from the, you know, the, the one citizen. And I think some, some of those suggestions are fine, if you're gonna say applicable law. But why would you put a time limitation on it? And why would you prevent other citizens from being able to, to join in on that petition?
Well, typically with petitions, you, for example, petitions for referendum, petitions for charter amendments, they require, they typically require a certain number of, in those cases, qualified voters that sign the petition at the time it's filed. You don't have people that come on after the fact. I mean, certainly people can support a petition or say, I'm, you know, I would hope you would act on this. I support it. Uh, it doesn't prevent that. But, um, typically, once a petition is filed, you don't have people jumping on the petition after the fact.
And I understand that for voting for a referendum. I mean, obviously, that, that makes sense. There's a, there's a, there's a time limitation. There's a date that a vote's gonna be taking, taken place. Um, you know, the petition may not get reviewed right away. There's no time limitation. So this is a kind of a different incidence of a petition.
And, 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 and again, Mrs. Price, to, to Mr. Thomas's point, this doesn't preclude someone from supporting the petition. But let's say the petition is, is filed, the, your, your secretary has to go through the recording process. And then every day for the next two weeks, she gets four or five more add-ons to that petition, which means now she has to go ahead and record those as well. So the fact that once a petition is filed by the secretary, um, doesn't preclude anybody from supporting it, either in public session or in writing to council members. So, the, again, this, this, this is not burdensome. It doesn't restrict anybody's, uh, right to, uh, support a petition, and doesn't restrict their right for their voice to be heard. It just doesn't burden our, our secretary down with having to record every add-on once a particular petition is filed.
And, and I don't disagree.
It's designed, really, to make the petitioner be as complete as possible.
That too, yeah.
It's not, I, I, yeah, I agree with this. You submit everything at one time. Don't keep coming back.
Well, and, and that's why I said you don't wanna have to update this every three minutes. But, you know, maybe, that, again, I'm trying to go through what the citizen wrote and at least have a little bit of discussion on these points. Um, and that's fine. You know, we're having, the having, we're actually having good discussion now. Um, I don't know about the time limitation, though, of eighteen months. That's arbitrary. I mean, if there's, if there's, and, and the way it was written was, if there's a material change in the facts or circumstances, then a new petition may be filed, uh, concerning that. I mean, again, we're, we just finished discussing, um, something that we were presented a whole lot of new information on that we need to reconsider, um, that resolution that we just spent so much time on. So, you know, do you, I don't, I, I, I don't know about putting an eighteen-month limitation on something. If you get new information to light, it's important to consider it. So, uh, that seems a little arbitrary, so.
Usually, I mean, this, this is not unique in government to have such a prohibition that you cannot file exactly the same action within a certain period of time. Uh, and, and for the same, for the same motivations, if, if it is, if it is merely duplicative. Uh, when there's new information, when there's a, a new twist, when there's, yes, absolutely. Uh, but that changes the substance, and it's, and it's not the same petition.
Right, so this point number four that's on this, um, comment says, if there's a material change in facts or circumstances, then a new petition may be filed concerning the matter. Um, so I, I would love, I think we should adopt that at least.
Another way perhaps to, to, to say this would say, no petition shall be filed with the county concerning a matter for which another petition was filed with the county at any time in the previous eighteen months, except upon presentation of new evidence. Something to the effect that would allow for somebody to present new evidence that might, that would change the substance of the, of the petition.
Yeah, can we use our change or mistake rule?
So that would, that would allow an opportunity. But the idea is to, to prevent, you, you don't wanna have people, if, if, people to keep filing petitions again for, for frivolous purposes or to clog up the, the council agenda on, on, on a particular matter. Um, but again, if somebody, if there really is new evidence to support, uh, the, the position, their, whatever they're advocating for in their petition, then, then that could be an exception.
Can you put that back in language again, that we can make that an amendment?
Sure, sure. Let me see the submitted.
Point number four. Unless there is a material change in fact or circumstance.
I, I don't think you really need any, any new language.
Yeah, you do, because this is basically saying, it's the same topic, even though something's changed, they're not gonna allow it. So if you let him add about six words, something like, unless there is a material change in fact or circumstance.
So you put a petition together, you get in front of the council, you have your public hearings, and then you, and then, I don't know, you, you, you lose. And so you turn right around and you say, oh, there was additional information that just came out. And you resubmit it again. You're essentially filibustering the council, right? Opposed to waiting eighteen months to, to rethink the entire process and put together your thoughts, gather the names, gather the research.
Material, the word is, is there's a material change in fact or circumstance, it has to be.
Who defines that?
Well, but, 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 what, what, what this is saying as it, as, as it's written, is that no petition shall be filed with the county concerning a matter for which another petition was filed with the council at the time of the, so, of eighteen months. Um, so it's like, my, I can't file a petition, the counsel of Frank's petition. So Frank, Frank puts in petition that says that, uh, he, 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 he wants, um, peas and carrots on Monday. I can't come back and say a petition saying, within eighteen months, that no, I want peas and carrots on Tuesday. No, that, that's what this is saying. This is saying, this is not to say that if there's a material change to a subject that we, that we had, maybe, maybe we're out of peas and carrots, and maybe we have to go to something else. So what this is saying is that I can't now try to counterbalance Frank's petition with my own petition within eighteen months.
Okay, I think you're trying to prevent the public, and things do change as, as evidence.
I'm trying to prevent the public. I'm just, I'm just reading the way this is written. This is, this is not saying that.
It's preventing somebody from, from doing that. And let's look about, we just spent the last hour doing, we've had some significant changes in facts, and we should be able to consider it. And I think that the public, if there is a significant change in material facts, they ought to have the right. It might be the same topic.
That's, 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 that's not saying you can't. This, this is not saying that you can't.
Let's ask Mr. Thomas.
This is not saying that you can't.
I am trying to prevent the public. Because if you can't get one of the five of us to put it on the agenda, and then you have to petition the public to put it on the agenda, yeah, you gotta wait eighteen months to do it again. You shouldn't be able to turn right around and do it the next day. There's five totally different council members. You can't get one of them to agree, then you're gonna go out to the public.
Or follow, or to file a petition just because you don't like to, like the other person petition? So you gotta, you, you're trying to counsel them out. That's, thi- this is not saying what you're, what you think is saying, Mrs. Price. And I, I know what Mrs., what the writer wrote, but you don't have to go down here and, and submit every single thing she wrote. That, that's not what this is saying.
Mr. Thomas, can you clear this up a little bit for us?
You, you could, I think, maybe to bring some clarity to it, you could add the words, uh, um, and, so no petition shall be filed with the county concerning a matter for which another petition was filed with the county at any time in the previous eighteen months, uh, except upon demonstration of a material change in facts or circumstances as determined by the council in its sole discretion. So that, they would have to present a material change in circumstances, then you would have to agree that that constitutes a material change in circumstances to allow the petition to, to go forward.
Like, there's no more peas and carrots.
Okay.
I would be okay with that language, what he said. I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Mr. Thomas, could you possibly read that back in, to the record for clarity?
Yes, I'm just writing it down. So to add to the sentence, to the, so the sentence would read, no petition shall be filed with the county concerning a matter for which another petition was filed with the county at any time in the previous 18 months, except upon demonstration of a material change in facts or circumstances as determined by the council in its sole discretion.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call a vote?
Yes, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack? Mr. Pack?
Am I muted? Aye, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So do you need a motion to take us to a vote incorporating the two amendments?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
So, so we got a motion and a second. Go ahead and but both, well, to, to, to go ahead and vote on 311.
As amended.
As amended, I'm sorry, as amended.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye, thank you. On time in the making.
All the time in the making now. Right on time with the public hearing, you know, right on time.
Mr. Callahan, can we take two minutes, please?
Sure. All right, it's, it's everybody come back two minutes yourself.
Thank you.
You're pro, no problem.
And we see your ceiling. Much better. All right, council, we all back?
Unfortunately, yes.
Oh, let's see, there you go, negativity, stop it. Okay, the public, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and get started on the public hearing. Ain't too bad, it's 8:30, only two hours behind, that ain't bad. Right, Mr. Pack? Okay, all right, council.
You told me not to be negative, so.
I wasn't. All right. Madam Secretary, could you read the resolution 313, number 313 into the record, please?
Yes, resolution number 313, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan regarding the connection of Phase One, Section One of the Lakeside Project to the existing trap wastewater. Sorry, this cut off. System, wastewater system, sorry.
All right, good. Mr. Thomas, do you have any comments or wishes to, on this resolution? We'll get ready to start off here.
I do not, no.
I got you. Okay. All right, so I'm gonna open this pub, I'm gonna open this, yeah, go ahead.
Well, actually, go ahead, Mr. Lesher.
Mr. Callahan, before we move to the public hearing, I would like to, I would like to offer and move the amendment that was prepared. It's the blue amendment, amendment number one in our package to resolution 313. I'd like to move that before we proceed to the public hearing.
Want to move it?
I'm, I'm, I'm making, I'm offering that motion for that amendment.
Yes, so can, I will second that. Can Mr. Thomas, please? Because it is, it is definitely different and it may change. It's not material or whatever you call that, but substantive. But it may change what people are going to say in the public hearing. So Mr. Thomas, could you explain it to us?
Yes, so this amendment is intended to add a requirement that any new connections from the Lakeside Startup Phase to the existing trap wastewater system are also subject to the existing wastewater treatment plant being upgraded to E and R standards with the treated effluent also meeting E and R standards as set forth in the trap area sewer, sewage system section of the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. And it would delete the proposed amendments that are inconsistent therewith. So the, the language about no portion of the startup phase may be connected to the existing system more than 18 months after final approval of this resolution and then within 18 months of from final issuance of all required permits and approvals for the new Lakeside facility. All hookups from the startup phase would have to be redirected there. That language is being proposed to be deleted under this amendment.
Thank you. And it's essentially what, what this amendment does is it reflects language that was offered by our own planning commission back in November in their, in their discussion on, on resolution 281. So that, so that essentially the portion of the phase of Lakeside, the initial phase of Lakeside that would rely on the existing trap plant would connection would first require the upgrade of the trap plant to the E and R standards to, to better take care of that discharge into La Trap Creek. After that, any of the new, any of the new discharge, of course, is covered by the, the plant, the E and R plant that is designed into the Lakeside project itself.
So let me back up two sentences and read it in its entirety because to where it says startup. Startup, so this is how it would read now. Startup wastewater treatment for the Lakeside Project may be provided by, and it's a one or a two. So it, what people may think is that, well, there is no upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant yet and it might take a couple of years, but they have an option. So startup wastewater may be provided by one, a modular E and R MBR wastewater treatment plant capable of operating at the initial development flow rates.
I'm sorry, you guys, are you guys reading from the blue? The blue, I think you said the blue.
Yep, and it's page two, the middle of page two, that second paragraph, about halfway through that paragraph.
In gray, in, in green?
Yeah, so do you see where it says one and two, Mr. Pack? Right in the middle?
Okay, yes, I do.
So go up, go up one line from there. Startup wastewater treatment for the Lakeside Project may be provided by, and this is old language, this has always been there, by one, a modular E and R MBR wastewater treatment plant for the Lakeside Project. Oh, I'm sorry, capable of operating at the initial development flow rate. So that's an E and R or by direct connection to the existing trap wastewater system. Any new connections to the town of Trap are subject to the existing wastewater treatment plant, not having any outstanding MDE enforcement actions, consent orders, or violations, and being upgraded to, oh, sorry, yes, and being upgraded to E and R standards with the treated effluent also meeting E and R standards as set forth. So whatever they connect to, whether it's a temporary modular wastewater treatment plant or whether it, when they get the spray irrigation one done, if MDE issues that permit, or the existing wastewater treatment plant that we talked about is biolack now, getting it to E and R. So that, that is what this amendment says. It gets rid of all of the timeline and the temporary connection the way it is now. And that is in line with what the planning commission said was that, you know, if we're sending things, as long as we're sending things to them, and we will be sending this to 313, to the planning commission, it will now have language that says it has to be connected to an E and R plant. Because they just, and we'll hear this in the public hearing. So I'll let the public hearing go first, go forth because Miguel will probably give us the information that I'm about, I'm asking.
I don't know if I can support this language because what you're basically, again, trying to do is impede a sovereign municipality from connecting the first 120 homes. Let me, let me.
No, we're not voting on the amendment tonight.
What you're trying to do is impede a sovereign municipality from, which, which you can't do, from, from connecting the first 120 homes to the existing wastewater treatment plant, which does meet MDE standards and saying that you can't even connect the first 120 homes until you get your current plant or your new plant into E and R. So this, this doesn't work. Let me finish.
We're not voting on this tonight. We're just sending it.
This doesn't, well, even, if, if, even the amendment, even the amendment smacks of governmental overreach. So you can't do this even under the guise that you're trying to make. Again, you are reaching way beyond, beyond your scope, yet again, yet again. And, you know, trying, trying to tell them that they cannot connect the first 120 homes until it's at E and R levels? Come on, come on.
See, we have a real question on that sentence just before it, where it says, any new connections to the existing Town of Trap wastewater system are subject to the existing wastewater treatment plant. Not, and it, so any new connections to the existing Town of Trap plant. Does that mean that if there was a restaurant there who septic failed, they wouldn't be able to hook up to the current plant?
It would be up to MDE. MDE is the one who controls whether they're gonna allow new connections or not. So if the, if they had a violation, it is not our purview, but it is actually up to MDE whether or not they would allow those connections. So we are not controlling connections if there's a violation.
No, no, I mean, like if there's a current restaurant and that's on a septic in the Town of Trap, the septic fails, they decide to connect, would they not be able to? Because this says any new connection to the existing plant.
That would be an MDE decision if there was a violation. As long as there's not an existing violation, of course, they'd be able to connect.
No, I think it's intended to refer to any new connections from the Phase One, Section One of Lakeside as referenced.
And I'm reading any new connections.
It's the first 120 homes, Mr. DeVio. It's, it's, it's trying, it's trying to, this is, this is an attempt to try to impede on the Town of Trap that they cannot make the first 120 homes connect to the existing plant, which MDE said, which MDE has already said, as you know, Mr. DeVio, is working within, within this regulatory permit and until the plant is upgraded, you know, that's what this is trying to do.
It just seems like it works out of moratorium until it's created, upgraded to an E and R, because it says any new connection to that existing plant.
No, and it's within that, Mr. Thomas just said that. And you and I had this conversation today. It's not a moratorium because there is technology, there is a temporary modular technology that they can bring in tomorrow that can have them connect these new homes to E and R technology. It does not require the spray irrigation to be done. It doesn't require the $7 million grant, which has been approved for the wastewater treatment plant. They can bring in temporary modular technology that exists today, that Ryan Showalter has even said exists today. And they can hook them up tomorrow with a temporary modular.
I'm concerned about the current.
Moratorium, I want to be clear.
I'm not talking about Lakeside, I'm talking about the, the Town of Trap. Because it appears that any new connections, I mean, if you had put in here that any new connections from the new development, that, that is different.
We're talking about Lakeside.
The context, the context of the paragraph, if you read it earlier, is clear.
You gotta go up two lines, Mr. DeVio. This is, this is Phase One, Section One of the proposal. Like, if you go up two lines, you'll see that this, this is flowing down from, from two lines up. So it's, it's, it is, it is targeting those new connections to, those first Phase One connections, saying basically that they can't connect to the existing trap plant unless it's E and R. It's, it's, this is a blatant attempt to impede.
No, it's not, it is not a moratorium.
It most certainly is, it most certainly is.
They can bring.
From moving forward with this department.
One at a time. One at a time, if you're gonna talk, if you're gonna talk, one at a time.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. So as I was saying to Mr. DeVio and answering, if you go up two lines to Phase One, where it says Phase One, Section One, and come down, this is, this is, this is speaking about those, those connections, those new connections in that, in the Lakeside Project, not what you're referring to. You're referring to if someone's on septic, a commercial property owner, and he wanted to connect, would he, would he be allowed to? That's not dealing with this, that's a whole separate matter.
And I want to be clear, this is not a moratorium. They can bring in the technology today. The developer has told us this in the past. It is even in one of the documents that exists in our packet tonight, that this technology exists. And I discussed that with you earlier, Mr. DeVio, that this is not a moratorium. We will have a public hearing, we are not voting on this amendment tonight. This, it only takes one person to send this over along, so to 313 has already, and this is where we just need to go ahead and go to Miguel and what, what the.
The amendment has been introduced and seconded.
Again.
It's been introduced and seconded. This is not being passed over this evening. This amendment has been introduced and seconded.
I'm trying to tell you. I'm trying to tell you that 313 right now has already been, has a decision by the Planning Commission. So right now, unless we amend it, then we can't do anything with it. So I guess I just wanted to get the amendment on the record, I wanted to make sure people knew that this was not a moratorium, that this is requiring a connection to some type of ENR technology that exists today, that does not put a moratorium on it, and then we can continue with the public hearing. But the public needed to know what the amendment was before they commented.
Mr. Callahan, a point of order. You have an amendment that has been introduced and seconded, it has to be voted upon. If the amendment fails, there's nothing for the public to consider for public hearing. You have an amendment, it has been introduced, it has been seconded, unless it is supported, unless it is supported by majority, there's nothing to be heard.
Robert, whoever seconded it can rescind the second, and then I can rescind the motion, because this amendment needs to go to the Planning Commission.
Who's seconded?
I believe this was introduced by Mr. Leshar and seconded by Ms. Price.
All right, so that I will rescind my second.
I've got a motion on the floor and seconded. Given amendment, Mr. Callahan. If it's not seconded, it dies.
We have introduced an amendment, that is all.
I will, I will, I will hold it up for a second.
We haven't had a public hearing. We don't vote on things before a public hearing, and before sending.
If you're offering an amendment, the amendment must be carried.
We have a public hearing, we have a public hearing first.
On 313, and on 313 that's drafted, you guys are offering an amendment.
All right. I agree with that.
Listen to me, I'm rescinding my second.
But hold on now, hold on, let's all slow down. Let's all slow down, okay? So the way I look at this is, the public hearings on 313, as is.
As is.
As is.
As is.
So you've done, so we can, Tom and Mr. Thomas, we can handle this a couple of different ways. Do we vote on this and vote it down and do a new one? Or, you know, a motion?
I think you can vote on the amendment, and then it's 313 as amended, and then you still go forward with the public hearing, and then it would go on, you could, you have an amended resolution, it can go back to the Planning Commission and Public Works Advisory Board for comment on the resolution as amended, but you still have the public hearing tonight.
What you're saying is, the new amendment to the amended 313, we can attach that to that for the public hearing.
Right, you're not voting to approve Resolution 313 as amended, you're voting to approve the amendment to the resolution, not voting on the resolution itself as amended. Just as we just did with the last resolution, where we voted on these individual amendments to the resolution itself, and then voted on the entire resolution as amended.
But how can we, how can, I'm just curious, how can we, so, as written now, okay, we're having the public hearing as is, how can we, how can we put this on top of that, and the public hasn't seen it yet?
You could defer, you could have another public hearing, you could defer the public hearing tonight to occur after the Public Works Advisory, if you were to adopt, vote on this amendment, and it passes, then you could defer the public hearing tonight until after the Public Works Advisory Board and Planning Commission has held their hearings and given their opinions, and then have the hearing on this as amended. That'd be one way to address it. I just, you've scheduled the public hearing, you have people here who want to speak, it seems, you may want to hear from them tonight while they're here, even if it's, even if you do end up deciding to hold another hearing later to address the amendments, after everybody's had a chance to digest the amendments and what the other bodies may say about.
Now, I agree, I agree with you. Not only that, we're going to have a work session, hopefully, too, and clear some of this up, too.
Right, so this would be appropriate for discussion in that form as well.
Correct, correct.
It is completely inappropriate to take a vote on this amendment, of which nobody has really heard, and we haven't had public comment on tonight. I have rescinded my second, so that we can go through the public hearing, and then we can talk about the amendment, and when we're going to introduce it later.
Okay. All right, so. Let me, let me, let me make sure that.
If you're going to do this on a technical.
Are you, are you not, are you not introducing an amendment tonight? Is that what I'm understanding? You're pulling your amendment tonight? Is that what I'm hearing?
Right now, for this moment, I am.
Well, he offered the amendment, you just seconded, I'm asking, Mr. Leshar, are you pulling your amendment tonight?
I have not done so.
Okay, so you have the amendment still before us, it has to be seconded.
I think that we need to hear from the Plan Commission before we do so.
Are you offering the amendment or not, Mr. Leshar?
I have offered the amendment.
Okay, it has to be seconded, it has to be seconded and carried.
All right.
Mr. Former president, you surely know the procedure around here, we've been through this before.
We do not vote on an amendment the moment it's been introduced, before we've even had a public hearing on the resolution at all. We don't do that.
Amendment has to be, it has to carry.
Hey, hey.
It has to carry.
One at a time. Here's what we need to do, okay? So the public hearing right now is on 311 as is right now. That's the public hearing right now.
Mr. Callahan, with all due respect, you have a council member who's proposed an amendment on the floor, you have to deal with that, you can't ignore it, it may be uncomfortable, but you can't ignore it. If the council member, if the council member is not going to withdraw his amendment, it has to be dealt with. He offered an amendment, someone needs to second it, and we have discussion, which we're having right now, and then the amendment is called to a vote. If the amendment carries, you have 313 now amended. So you can't just ignore it.
And what you mean, wait a minute now, what you mean, Mr. Pack, carried on top of 311?
It would alter 311, the amendment would alter 311 as drafted, it would alter it, it would amend it.
I'm just understanding, I'm just trying to understand you. I'm just trying to understand what you're saying.
It would change it, it would change, it would change 311.
The county is doing it now.
It would change it.
We do not always vote on the amendment immediately when we have a public hearing at hand. We have, we have offered amendments in the past to let the public know what the amendment's going to be, but we do not necessarily vote on them before we've had a public hearing.
You don't have an amendment until it's carried. You have an idea, but you don't have an amendment until it's carried. You have an idea.
Mr. Callahan is correct. 313 has not been amended. It is simply out there in the public, the amendment is in the public record, but it is not, 313 is not amended, that now allows the public hearing to go forward with this further knowledge. When we get the amendment, we can get a second, we can vote on that at a later point, but all that we have now is that on the public record, and the hearing can proceed on 313.
We're not going with an amendment tonight, okay?
It is not an amendment, correct.
Okay, all right, so there's no amendment being offered for 313 this evening. I'm sorry, Mr. Callahan.
Introduced, surely, it wasn't that long ago that you were president of this council, you must remember how this was done.
Mr. Leshar, with all due respect, you can't, you can't issue an amendment, throw it out there to a resolution that's already drafted, and not have it seconded, and not have it addressed.
Okay, well, let's move on.
You can't just wave it out there to see if people like it or not.
Let's move on, council, okay? So right now, okay, so, okay, so right now, I'm going to open the public hearing on 313. If you have, you'll have three minutes to speak individually, if you're representing an organization, you'll have five minutes. Mr. Willie, do we have any callers or anybody on the phone that wants to talk about 313?
Mr. Callahan, Mr. Willie had to leave.
Oh, he did, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's no worries. So we do have several people who are joining us this evening. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. Mr. Schmidt, one of the commissioners from the Town of Trap, had written in earlier and asked to speak, so, Mr. Schmidt, I'm going to unmute you, and you have the floor.
Yep, and let me throw the ground rules, we need, so, tell us who you are, where you're from, and, Mr. Pack, I'm going to give you a job, you're going, you're going, you're going to keep time for us, okay?
Mr. Callahan, one moment, we normally do hear from the planning and zoning officer before we start the regular public, so can we hear from Miguel?
What, first?
With his report from the Planning Commission and the Public Works Advisory, and Ray from the Public Works Advisory Board, we always hear from those two typically first, before we go through the rest of the public hearing.
That's fine, that's fine, is Miguel on here?
I am, I am on here.
Miguel, you're, you're, you're up, bud, it's showtime.
I did prepare a memorandum to the council, laying the vote of the Planning Commission and certification of Resolution 313 that was sent to them at a public hearing at their January meeting, where they certified that Resolution 313 was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. That motion passed three to two. And I also indicated there are some of the concerns they expressed related to that vote. There are concerns about level of nitrogen released into La Trap Creek, the lack of a nitrogen cap imposed on the existing plant, and the overall existing conditions of La Trap Creek. They noted that the existing plant is a biolack plant, and they expressed concern that any connection of additional homes from Lakeside of Trap to the existing plant will continue to harm surface waters, watermen, and recreationists. Callahan may use this moment, and 313, but just to, now that I have the floor for a couple of minutes, to just ask, make sure that I understand the direction from the council related to 308 and what will be 313. I understand that the council is setting up a, proposing to set up a work session.
Which you're going to be there.
Okay. And in addition to that, the direction of the council is, I understand, I think from Councilmember Leshar, is that the commission at their meeting next week will provide an opinion on Resolution 308 in addition to the work session, or they will not, and they will attend the work, the joint work session, and then go from there. So I just want to make sure I have that clear.
Right, you're heading in the right direction, but they, I'd rather see them not discuss it until after the work session.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I needed to know. Okay, thank you, and thank you for allowing me to for a second, thank you.
No problem, no problem, and is Ray here?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, hey, Ray, how you doing, man?
I'm doing very well, yourself?
Good, 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 appreciate you sticking around.
No problem, no problem. I think, as you just heard, the Plan Commission did find Resolution 313 inconsistent with the con plan. We actually had 313, Resolution 313, on the Public Works Advisory Board, I removed it after the Planning Commission basically found that it was inconsistent with the con plan. At that point, the Public Works Advisory Board did go and provide, I guess, a listing of what they believe is new information collected, I think, from the public hearings and whatnot for Resolution 308, as well as possibly the discharge permits, so that information was forwarded to you by Bill Anderson through, I think it was Susan Moran. The only one point I would make is that if you do amend Resolution 313, if you do that, and it goes back to the Planning Commission, I don't believe we're going to be able to make the advertising date, so that would probably have to wait for any action until March.
Yeah, thank you, Ray, I was going to say, I was going to say that, thank you for reminding. March 2nd would be the actual date, if there is an amendment that is proposed and approved by the council, it would have to go back to public hearing.
Well, you know, that was my whole point, it would have been really nice if we would have had this meeting, there was no Planning Commission vote at that, at that time, because we're getting right here, the, some more information, so they've taken, in, you know, in my opinion, they've really taken a little premature vote at the time, because not all the information is out there yet. But, hey, it is what it is at this point, but we're going to come up with different information, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, to keep on moving forward, so, at this time, anybody else want to say anything with staff? Because I want to go ahead and open it to the public, but this gentleman is waiting.
I would just like to say that there are, there's a member of the Planning Commission and the Public Works Advisory Board are both on the line as well for comment.
Oh, they are, okay.
They are, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Gezzi are both on there.
Okay, so, let's, let's, let's ask Mrs. Gezzi to go ahead and, and come on and talk to us for a minute.
Mr. Callahan, once you go through your public, you already got the opinion of the Planning Commission and the Public Works Advisory Board, as noted by your, your planning officer and your Public Works Advisory, your Public Works Engineer, can we just hear from the public now?
We do typically hear from the chair or whatever of each of those committees.
We do not, we hear, we hear from, we hear from the boards, the board, and we heard, we heard your board report, three to two from the Planning Commission, and three to, and in the Public Works Advisory Board, we heard from both of them. Can we hear from the public now?
All right, I'll grant that, Mr. Pack, I'll tell you what we'll do, that way, that might have a little bit more information once they hear from the public, they could, the public could clean something up, so I'll grant that. So, okay, Madam Secretary, could we go ahead and start with the public?
Yes, Mr. Schmidt, your line is unmuted, if you'd like to go ahead and speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt, appreciate you hanging in there tonight with us.
No worries, thanks for having me.
Yeah, no problem.
So, again, as the last meeting, I was at, you know, this is something that I'm coming to you guys somewhat on a personal level, even though I am on the Trap Town Council and the Trap Town Planning Commission, but I did want to say a few things about all of this. So, so, let's be clear about Trap's wastewater treatment plant. It is not a failing plant. It may be an older plant, but it is not a failing plant. This is a biolack plant that has been maximized to almost BNR standards, and is working and is being operated to its peak ability. The plant that seems to have the ire of so many people in recent months was built in 2003 with no grant money or help from MDE, the state of Maryland, or the residents of Talbot County. The residents of Trap, all 513 households, took on this $3.1 million project all by themselves to better what we were doing. Since that time, the plant has been upgraded twice to something just short of a BNR plant. Mind you, we are processing the phosphorus to ENR standards at present. These upgrades have taken the plant as far as it can go, and with the help of our town water superintendent, it is operating to the standards to which it was intended to operate. Bill 313 has the language to take the authority of Trap's wastewater treatment plant away from Trap itself. Trap is an incorporated municipality, we have our own rules, our own regulations, we need to have the authority to determine how our wastewater treatment plan is run, and how many houses to connect to that wastewater treatment plant. We do not want the Talbot County Council to be our big brother when we have a single home to be connected to the wastewater treatment plant. If anyone has been paying attention to Trap's meetings, they will know that we are presently, and have been for a couple of years, researching a new ENR plant. A couple of options have been looked at and deemed not feasible. We are making progress forward, talking with MDE and USDA concerning funding. We know as well, you know as well as I do, to point Ferry Point and Y Preserve, that putting a new wastewater treatment plant in place takes years of planning. We are nearing a preliminary decision, taking away these hookups, the hookups, the 120 hookups from Lakeside to the Town of Trap, is taking away a lot of connection fees that would greatly impact Trap's ability to pay for a new wastewater treatment plant. In all reality, the developer, Lakeside, will be building the wastewater treatment plant well before we will be able to, because a private business has the different rules and regulations than municipalities do. Again, that is something you know very well. So this bill will only hurt the Town of Trap as it is written. To point, the point in all of this, the Town of Trap is working diligently to build a new ENR wastewater treatment plant. Having the Talbot County Council on our backs telling us how to run our wastewater treatment plant is unnecessary. Again, we are moving forward, and that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, and I can't thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, and I can't thank you enough. And I would, I would want to make sure that your council and you, or, um, I will be, as you listened, we will be setting up a workshop, and I definitely want you guys there, because that's the whole reason I went to communication and for people to understand what you guys are trying to do.
Sounds perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Secretary, next caller?
Yes, the next caller is Alan Gerard. You're on, you're unmuted, Mr. Gerard.
Thanks, Jessica. Alan Gerard, representing the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. I did share, uh, a amendment with the members of council, uh, that introduced Resolution 313, very similar in nature to the one that was just discussed prior to the public hearing. There's no disagreement that the upgrades are needed at this plant. Under current condition, the plant has violated its permit last year, exceeding ammonium nitrogen limits by 249%. Even when performing without violations, the plant discharges an average of nearly 24 milligrams per liter of nitrogen. ENR treatment can bring that figure down to three. Now, the county's own comp plan recognizes the compelling need to minimize impacts from discharges, designating La Trap Creek and other local waterways in the county as quote-unquote "unsuitable receiving waters for treated waste." Now, town of Trap agrees by its own actions, as we just heard that the plant needs to be upgraded. It submitted, or plans to submit preliminary engineering reports to upgrade the plant with ENR. That action enables Trap to move forward with its permitting for the full design and construction of the upgrade. And all this is in line with the county's expectations in its comp plan, which assumes ENR treatment technology will be in place at Trap by the end of the decade. For these reasons, I hope you'll consider amending the county water and sewer plan to require ENR treatment at Trap before any new homes are connected to that facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gerard. Appreciate your, uh, input tonight, and thanks, thanks for hanging in there with us tonight, too. Okay?
Thanks, sir.
Madam Secretary, next caller?
Uh, nobody else has raised their hand to speak. If you would like to speak, if you could raise your hand so we can call on you. That appears to be the end of the speakers for this evening, Mr. Callahan.
Okay, that, that's fine. Um, o- okay. So, um, at this time, Madam Secretary, um...
Sorry, Mr. Callahan, I apologize. Somebody did just raise their hand. Ryan Showalter would like to speak.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Mr. Showalter.
Thank you, President Callahan, members of the council. Uh, Ryan Showalter appearing on behalf of Trap East Holdings Business Trust, uh, in connection to, uh, Resolution 313. And, and I have, uh, comments both on the present version, and I'll just share a couple of brief thoughts on your, your amendment. The, um, the, there is no doubt that there's a commitment by, uh, Trap East to have the Lakeside project long-term served by an ENR quality wastewater treatment plant. The, uh, town of Trap has existing capacity within its plant, within the permit limits authorized by the state, within the TMDL limits established for La Trap Creek, and providing utilization of some of that existing capacity for Lakeside on an interim basis, uh, allows the town to connect in the near term, uh, capital connection fees in excess of $600,000, which helps the town either reduce its existing debt or pay for a new treatment plan. So based on this council's approval of Resolution 281, uh, the town of Trap and Trap East entered into a wastewater allocation agreement in January of 2021 that provides for that interim allocation. And again, it is, it is an interim or temporary allocation, uh, for which the town has been paid those funds. The, the connection, a- as you know, you know, occurs when a house is constructed. Uh, it takes time to build infrastructure, it takes time to construct houses, a- and you don't actually have any flow until the, uh, the house is occupied. So I understand a desire to see those connections occur over a short period of time. If we had a construction permit and discharge permit for the new Trap, uh, Lakeside plant today, it would be under construction next month. You know, the, the, contrary to suggestions by the public, the wastewater treatment plant for Lakeside will be constructed as soon as it is permitted. It's not something we intend to delay for months or years, planning to build only 120 homes. It's something we intend to construct as soon as we're able to construct it. So the, the reality and the practicality of, you know, limiting these connections, I, I think is, um, likely to be of, of little significance, uh, from an actual discharge perspective. The town has capacity to utilize. It takes months to construct homes, then they have to be sold before they're occupied, before they actually generate flow. So the, the first sentence in this proposed amendment, um, a- as is, without, without the council's blue amendment number one, I, I would submit to you is, is vague. You know, the determination of whether a, uh, an enforcement action or consent order is outstanding, I think is clear, but the determination of whether there's a violation outstanding, uh, just defers to another day, a question in a dispute. You know, there, there were three, uh, months of violations back in the beginning of 2021. The town Trap has oper, town of Trap has operated its plant in compliance with its permit since that time. You know, the suggestions by the public that the state hasn't taken an enforcement action are true. To my knowledge, no enforcement action's been taken. That begs the question, does that mean a violation is outstanding? Um, who gets to be the arbiter of that? Uh, I, I think that language just invites, uh, future and ongoing debate. The, the second sentence of your proposed amendment, the sentence that says no portion of the startup phase may be constructed, I'm sorry, may be connected more than 18 months after final approval of Resolution 313? I, I think that has the opposite effect of what this council desires. If, if, if the, um, council members who introduced this amendment desire to limit the utilization of the town's treatment plant, that sentence actually incentivizes or encourages or requires a, a race, if you will, for connections. If, if the right to connect expires after 18 months, it incentivizes those connections to occur sooner so that they can be utilized. If that sentence is deleted, it doesn't change the impact of, of the third sentence, which is the provision that says within 18 months after receipt of the, the discharge permits and construction permits, the flow has to go to the new plant. So if you delete what I'll call the, the second insert, the second sentence in its entirety, you still have the 18-month timeframe for, uh, transmission of the flow from the existing plant to the new Lakeside plant. And, and I think frankly, that's more consistent with your intent. Um, and the last thing that I'll note, you know, 18 months generally I expect to be enough time to construct and commission a wastewater treatment plant absent procurement or, you know, COVID business impacts, uh, and delays. So I, I'm not gonna tell you that that's not sufficient time, but I want to just caution you that there are procurement challenges in the construction world that might complicate that.
Five minutes, Mr. Showalter.
I'm sorry, what, what, how many minutes?
Yeah, that was your five minutes.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess I'll reserve my comments on the amendment for your next hearing.
Thanks, sir.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Showalter, and I, I really appreciate that, um, that, uh, very valuable information. And, and I want to make sure, if you didn't listen tonight, which I'm sure you have, um, you know, we're putting a workshop together, and I would like for you to be there and follow up with additional information on what you've, what you've, what, what's happened here in the last, you know, four weeks or so, if you would, please.
Mr. Callahan, may I ask Mr. Showalter two questions, please?
Sure.
Um, you just said interim basis and that the intent is to connect to ENR. And when I put this, uh, initial, um, 313 together, um, you know, it was a compromise, and it was basically trying to put words to what you have been saying to us for over a year. Can I ask you why you didn't go ahead and put that language in the agreement? Because as written, it doesn't limit you. It doesn't limit you to 120 homes, and you keep talking about intent. But the problem with intent is if you don't have it in writing, you don't have it. And so everybody might have the best of intentions, but there's nothing in writing that says that you have to do it, which was the, the, the idea behind this particular resolution. Um, are you guys willing to, on your own, put something in writing that would require you to go ahead and start buil, building, um, the spray irrigation plant once you get some type of permit from MDE, rather than us having to write something to, to basically force you to do it? And have you connect within, you know, you, you've been saying 12 to 18 months, you guys can build this thing?
So, Ms. Pack, the answer is yes. Uh, and, and if you, i- if you have, uh, lines of communication, an MDE that can facilitate or expedite the issuance of a discharge permit and a construction permit, we'll begin construction of the treatment plant in three weeks. I mean, we're, w- w- we intend to construct the Lakeside ENR plant when permits are available for it.
Okay. I would like you to put that in writing, because it's not in the agreement. It's not in writing now. So, um, I would like you to consider doing so, which I think might make our job, um, a little bit, uh, a little bit easier. And the second question is, if you go back to the original agreement, uh, with the town and everything, hookup to the old plant was never part of the original deal. That changed somewhere along the way. Could you clarify that? Because it was not in the original documents. There was never any intent to hook up to this old plant. Why, why now? Why not go ahead and, and, and build this thing before hooking up anything and make sure that, that the, any new connections are to ENR technology, which everybody agrees is the best solution?
Well, let's, so, so I don't, I don't want to belabor too many points, but there's been lots of allegations and suggestions that, that there's new information and facts and, and history, you know, going back 20 years that, that I strongly disagree with. So let me just take a moment.
I went back to one of the old agreements. I did read it.
So, yeah, so, so technology changes, and as you well know, politics change over time. At the beginning of this project, the desire and intent of the town of Trap was to see a standalone, uh, sewer service district called Trap East to be served by a 540,000-gallon BNR biolack wastewater treatment plant with spray irrigation. That's what the 2002 Conference of Water and Sewer Plan specifically describes, and, and that was the plan. Um, this, this question of whether the plant was in the Water and Sewer Plan was debated back in 2003, 2004, 2005. MDE evaluated that and determined that the proposed infrastructure was in fact in the county's Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, and the state issued permits for both discharge and construction of the Trap East BNR plant. That, those permits were not utilized due to the economic, um, conditions that occurred 2007, 2008, and beyond. Um, in the 2009, 10 timeframe, the politics in the town of Trap were different. A gentleman named Robert Crosswell, who's the former Trap wastewater system operator, was president of the town council, and, and the town of Trap, uh, uh, actually had a different conclusion. So the town of Trap in, and, and I don't have the dates in front of me, so I'm gonna say in the 2010 timeframe, but I can confirm those dates separately. Um, it's not a misrepresentation. I- in that timeframe, the town of Trap decided that it wanted to evaluate not having a separate Lakeside plant, but having a single plant. So some evaluation of, uh, connecting all of the Lakeside flow to the existing town plant was undertaken. Um, the town council at that time had a, a preference actually to see, uh, the approach to upgrade the town plant and have all flow, um, go to the town's existing footprint, the site of the existing town plant with an upgrade on that site, uh, utilizing both spray irrigation and the point discharge. Um, there were discussions with MDE about the possibility of, of essentially a pivot on where the plant would occur, and, and the town, uh, the MD would not entertain multiple permits for, uh, a construction. So the town notified the state in writing that it did not intend to proceed with a separate Lakeside, uh, or then Trap East wastewater treatment plant. There wasn't an expression by the town it was abandoning the project. It was an expression by the town of its intent at that time to see a single plant on the west side of Route 50. Um, evaluation of the technology to do that, the cost of, of construction and opportunities for discharge, then changed, and, and the, the current plans are to go back to what essentially was the original plan, which is have a ENR plant that uses spray irrigation on the east side of Route 50. There's no misrepresentations, there's no fraud, there's no lies. It's just the reality that over the course of 18 years, technology and politics have, have changed, and, and those circumstances have vacillated. So the, the current plan...
Okay. That doesn't make it incumbent upon the county council, because politics have changed, to grant, to grant that request when into, back in 2002 or '04, whatever the date it was. So I was just, I'm asking if, for you all to put it in writing that you will not connect anything unless it's to ENR technology that, that can exist. But, um, I thank you for answering those two questions. I'm sure this conversation will be continued.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Showalter. I appreciate it. Um, and, um, I hope, uh, I hope you can make arrangements to, to be, um, at our work session. Thank you. Um, Madam Secretary, uh, did you say something, Mr. Pack?
No. If the public hearing was, was over, I was gonna ask, would you entertain a motion to move this to, uh, to vote this evening? It is a numbered resolution, has been read a second time, and is eligible for vote.
Okay. Do I have a, do I have a second?
I would ask that, uh, that we defer, uh, action on this, uh, resolution, uh, so that we can handle this the same way that we're handling 308.
You have a mo, you have a motion on the floor. You have a motion on the floor. Let's see if you have a second.
Okay. Also, when count, you know, we're gonna have this standalone agreement, nobody's ready to, well, maybe you're ready to vote, because you've already made up your mind and you're not listening to some of the information that's coming out.
I'm not listening.
There's, there is an amendment that we need to discuss and take this information from the public hearing. We don't typically vote this quickly, and I would like to see this amendment go back to the Planning Commission, because right now our hands are kind of tied.
You don't have an amendment. Mr. Lesher, you don't, you don't have an amendment.
Okay. Well, I'm not ready to vote. I'm not ready to vote on this tonight. We already decided that we were gonna defer the vote on 308.
No, no, no one, no one has to act on my motion. I mean, it's, it's, it's a rule of procedure. I can make a motion if no one's seconded. It fails.
And you're gonna do me so good at those, Mr. Pack, trying to make a motion.
That's how the rules are, Mrs. Price. I can make the motion. If nobody seconds the motion, it fails. That's how, that's how things go.
Exactly. Exactly. So let's, let's all, let's all just, you know, be respectful for everybody. That's all Mr. Pack did. He just called for a vote, and he, and, and at this time, he didn't have a second. So, so that's failed. Okay? So now let's go back to, to, to Mr. Lesher. And Mr. Lesher, you, you've made a motion to defer it, correct?
Uh, I will ma, I will offer that as a motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
To defer the vote? Yes.
Yes.
But you don't, you don't have to defer the vote if, if, if there's, if there's not a motion, if there's not a motion vote tonight, it doesn't get voted on tonight. You don't have to defer anything.
Okay. That's fine. No problem.
The motion failed.
Okay. Okay, let's move on. Madam Secretary, um, at, at this time, I, I know it's failed, but I need to close the public hearing, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So at this time, public hearing will be closed on 313. Okay? So are we moving on?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So...
A lot of times we leave it open based on what people hear. Is there any reason not to leave it public, written public comment open until we meet again? Or till Friday, or the Friday before we meet again? We leave public comment open all the time. People listen to our meeting and discussion.
Until we move matters to vote all the time.
Okay. Well, so I would then guess I could make...
Look, there, so, so, so bear with me on this, okay? So let's look at it like this. But right now, you don't like number 313. You don't like it. You want to change it. Okay? So it doesn't mean anything at this point for you. You want to go ahead and amend 313, so, you know, let's get through the work session and come back with a new resolution.
Right. And so while all this is going on, is there any reason why we can't leave public comment open as there, because it'll be a public work session? They may hear...
They're wel, they're welcome to email us anytime.
Okay. But we... Okay, but we don't have to officially close public comment?
Well, he did, Laura. Let's move on. He did, he closed it. He's the chair, he closed it. Let's move on.
Okay, so let's move on to discussion of pending general assembly legislation, okay? Madam Secretary, do we have any legislation before us?
Yes, Mr. Callahan, we have one bill, House Bill 51, Talbot County Deer and Turkey Hunting Sundays, and Delegate Mounts is with us this evening.
That sounds great. Mr. Mount, are you with us?
I am with you this evening. It's great to see everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah, we can see you. We can see you and hear you. I don't know, I can't see you, but I can hear you.
Okay, well, just imagine a big smiling delegate looking right at you.
Oh, it's no doubt my mind, you know what I mean? No doubt.
Uh, so, would you like me to present the bill?
Yeah, exactly, please, and explain to us where you stand with this.
Okay, so we have, last year, we brought a bill to council. It's almost identical to this bill that allows for Sunday hunting during the deer season for deer with the weapon of, that's approved for that season, for Sundays that were not currently available. And it basically would put Talbot County on the same Sunday hunting regimen as neighboring counties. And it also includes a short turkey season in the spring. I believe, I should know this, I don't offhand, I wasn't totally prepared to be with you tonight, but it was three or four Sundays in total. And the bill that we brought last year, it included public and private land. And in Talbot County, we have one area of public land set demonstration forest. That was a problem. We discussed it up in Annapolis in the Environment and Transportation Committee. So we amended the bill last year and took out the public portion. So the legislation before you today would only allow for the Sunday hunting, the Sundays that are not already permitted during deer season, on private land only, and would also allow a Sunday during the turkey season on private land only. In the past, the council has supported the legislation, and I believe there was, we had one dissenting vote last year.
All right, council for discussion? Anybody?
I'll move to support Delegate Mounts's House Bill 51. We did so last year, and it's even a little bit more narrow, as he described, without the public land.
And I'll make a second, or give the second on that. You know, there's 52 Sundays out of the year. We're giving five to allow the opportunity for individuals to hunt and procure their own meat for their families. I think that that's a decent trade-off to those individuals who would like to be hiking those days. Hopefully, they can find another place out of those five Sundays that they'll miss.
Okay, Madam Secretary, I got a motion to second it. Should we read the bill into the record?
Yes, it's House Bill 51, Talbot County Deer and Turkey Hunting on Sundays.
All right, so we got a motion in the second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Nay.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Thank you, Johnny, for spending some time with us tonight and working hard on, you know, trying to manage, you know, trying to manage the deer for the farmers and everything. So that's kind of what it's all out. You know, we've got herds of deer, and they need to be managed. So I really appreciate you working hard on trying to get this passed.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I appreciate all of you. I know it's a tough time right now. I've been on the meeting here tonight, and, you know, Annapolis is going to be tough this year. Doing things remotely, we're remote right now with the House of Delegates. That was a last-minute change with Omicron and that sort of thing. I want to make sure everybody on the council knows that I will be home quite a bit, even when we are meeting in person. I think one of the hardest things we're dealing with right now is the ability to communicate because of the separation. And if I can do anything to bridge or facilitate, you know, communication, like me to come in and meet with one, two, or however, I'm close to home, I'm your guy, so please don't hesitate to let me know, because I'll be there for you. So thank you, guys, very much, and have a great rest of the night.
And one last thing, Johnny, if you would. We're going to be doing a work session within the next week, and I'd really would like to invite you, and it's very, very important about Trap and all the discussions, and I would like for you to have a seat at the table.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. I appreciate that, and I get it. It's, I get it, absolutely. Thank you for the invitation.
Okay, all right.
Johnny, I want you to know that I helped you a little bit with the deer population, I believe, and I can call myself a true Eastern Shore woman, because I hit my first deer two months ago, and I know you hit at least two or three a year, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that there's probably one less deer because of me.
Dear, oh dear, I'm sorry to hear that. I hit five in five years.
Yeah, you do it a lot.
I've invested in deer whistles. And I don't want to belabor, I know you guys have had a long night, but I will be coming back to you to discuss setting up a deer donation program. Montgomery County has one. DNR says it's the best in the state of Maryland, and so I'm going to try to do what I can to bring some resources to Talbot, so that we can get some of that flowing. I know there's a church in Trap that relies heavily on that protein, so, but I'm sorry to hear about your vehicle, but you're safe, that's the important thing.
It's all better now, and I kept the tuft of deer fur that landed in my grill, and I'm going to do something with it, hang it in my rearview mirror or something.
Okay, okay. Well, be safe out there. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Johnny.
Thank you, Johnny. Okay, so, Madam Secretary, was that the only, was that the only thing as of right now?
Yes, that was the only bill this evening.
Okay, so, let's get, we got through that. Now we got our county manager, hopefully, he can put, he can, he hadn't said much tonight, you know what I mean? You're very quiet, you know? So.
Well, thank you. I have about, I have four items for the county manager report that I'll run through for council's consideration. The first one, under board and committee appointments, this is for the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board, requesting the reappointment of Wendy Young-Diet, Laura Higgins, Glenn Clackling, and Carrie Ingles-Roberts to that board.
Frank DeVilleo, I'll make the motion that we approve.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion to second to approve these very needed people. I know several of them, and we're really happy to have people like that on these boards. So, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Okay, the next item I have, Miguel is with us this evening. He is here to request a letter in support of the 2022 Midshore Rural Legacy Grant Process. Miguel, I'm going to hand it off to you at this point to present the request. You are here, aren't you?
I am here, yes.
Mr. Satterfield is with us as well.
Yes. So, Mr. Satterfield, if you have any questions, he's with Eastern Shore Land Conservancy. He is part of the management of this program. This comes to the county council every year, where Eastern Shore Land Conservancy requests to the council letter of support regarding the two legacy areas that impact Talbot County, the Tuckahoe Rural Legacy Area and the Eastern Shore Heartland Rural Legacy Area, and you have in Granicus a map of both of those areas. And so this letter just states that the legacy area remains consistent with our comprehensive plan, which is all about agriculture, or preservation-related agriculture, forestry, and other environmental sensitive areas, that Eastern Shore Land Conservancy does such a well job managing in terms of those easement acquisition programs in partnership with the state of Maryland. Yeah, so if you have any questions specifically on the program, David is here to answer any of those.
David, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I think Miguel's done a pretty good job of discussing this. I mean, these rural legacy areas have been in existence for almost 20 years. We did expand them a few years ago. The council was part of that decision. You know, we appreciate the council's consideration here and continuing to work with us on this annual application, because the funding has been key to protection of 63 properties on the shore so far, and we have seven projects currently going on, one of which is in Talbot County. So their continued support is excellent for continuing that program and getting us more and more funding, so that we get more and more done here on the shore.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. We look forward to-
Do you have a motion? Yeah, I was going to say, do we have a motion?
I make a motion for approval of the rural legacy.
Okay, we got a motion to second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Thank you, Miguel and Mr. Satterfield, appreciate that. Preston, we have Preston here. He has two requests this evening. The first one is to award bid number 2108, Community Center Athletic Field Irrigation. He has a single bid for $85,000. If it's approved, he can get a grant. He'll be here to talk, he can add detail to his request at this point.
So this was part of the changing over the turf in the back of the community center of Bermuda to be more play-ready and safer for athletes. Like Mr. Sam said, this is something that if approved, would have a 90% reimbursement from the state program open space funding.
And we have confirmed that his budget is suitable enough to handle the difference, make it the 10%. Remove.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Okay, the second request is to award bid number 2111, Community Center Ice Plant Replacement. As you read in your packet, Preston's requesting council approval to award bid 2111 to American Arena, a sole bidder in the amount of $1,890,000 plus an additional fixed cost of $25,000 for the removal of the old ice plant, including draining and disposing of all toxic chemicals for a total of $1,114,000. Upon completion of the project, reimbursement of $1 million will be requested from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, local parks and programs, infrastructure funding to be used in FY '22. Preston and I are requesting council's approval for $114,000 in contingency funds to cover the cost, not reimbursed by DNR. We have certified that contingency is available for this purchase to cover the cost. Remove.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to second to put a new ice plant up, up to the skating rink. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
I have a question.
Yep.
Uh, so, is the $1 million going to be reimbursed? The total, okay, so it is. We just have to submit it when it's done, so it's-
Correct. It's part of the LPPI plan, the one that, it was, it was the extension that all the counties got a fixed amount extra this year, as far as part of the program open space. So, yes, that's already a fixed amount. It's already been approved also.
I just wanted to make sure that was definitely in the bank, so to speak. All right, thank you.
All the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Hi. Hi, you didn't hear me? Aye.
There you go, there you go. So, okay.
Thank you.
I just want to say one thing with Preston, is Preston, are you still here?
Yeah.
You, I'm really, I'm really proud of you. I'm looking at ways to be able to pay for this, because it's a lot of money, and you do such a good job, and really, that's, you're really replacing the heart of that building, and I really appreciate it. It means a lot to a lot of people, especially Mr. DeVilleo, you know what I mean?
Now, if I can just get the sewer finished, then I'd be-
I know it, I know it. But don't, please don't get him, don't get him worked up.
That's right. Don't get him worked up.
I don't think Mr. Pack is any more worked up about this than I am, so.
It's all right, it's coming. We're moving forward, so, but all kidding aside, thanks, thanks a lot for your hard work.
I think Ray been ducking me.
All right, we'll get her done, we'll get her done.
So, council, I join you, Mr. Callahan. I would like to recognize Preston for his hard work out there. The two items we talked about tonight that you approved, they're not unfamiliar to you, they've been part of his long-range plan. It's exciting, some of the things happening out there that Preston and his team are doing. We're going to be moving forward with the new gymnasium, replacing the ice plant, doing a lot of work out there. So, Preston, good job, and council, thank you for approving those items. The only other thing I have under announcements is, council has decided that council meetings will remain virtual through February. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Council President. Thank you for your help.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager, and you do such a great job. Appreciate you being, preparing council for all this stuff. All right, so, Madam Secretary, you're up next. Do we have that public comment?
Yes, if anybody would like to speak this evening, if you could please raise your hand or send a note in the chat feature.
What would do if you're not getting anything right now? Something pops up? Do you have anything right yet?
Nobody's indicated they wish to speak.
Okay, all right, well, if something pops up during council comments, just give me, you know, just let me know, okay?
Sure, President Callahan.
Yes, yes, Ms. Price.
I would like to address that, because once council has started making their comments, I don't really feel it's appropriate for the public to comment after us, because sometimes they might say something that we want to address. So this is their time. If nobody is on at this point, once council has moved on to the next agenda item, we should probably stick with that, and if they, you know, there's an opportunity right now for them to comment, but once we've moved on in the agenda, I don't think we should go backwards. And, because council should always have the last word in our meetings, and that didn't happen last time. Just my two cents.
I agree with her. While you're doing the talking, Ms. Price, go ahead.
I don't actually have any additional comments tonight, so how about that? It's been a long night. Thank you, everybody.
Welcome. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you. During the Battle of Britain in 1940, the British government ordered a blackout, so as not to aid Luftwaffe bombers that would confirm information about the location of London homes and businesses. The government did not leave it up to the personal decision of each individual as to whether or not to use blackout curtains, and yet Londoners did not whine about this loss of their personal liberty. They were saving lives, their own and those of their neighbors. After a compelling presentation by our county health officer at this council's last meeting concerning the dire situation of our local hospital and medical providers, the COVID caseload in this county, and the strong recommendation to return to indoor masking to abate this crisis, all this council could do is to make a statement about how it was up to each individual. Our weak response showed a real disregard for the health of our constituents and for life itself.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. Mr. Pack? Thank you, Mr. Lesher. Mr. Pack?
Callahan?
Yep.
You know, the, the pandemic has certainly impacted each of us in, in, in different ways, and as evident even here tonight, you know, that mental health is, the stress sometimes can, can get to, can be overwhelming, you know? I, I have asked the, the COVID response team to take a look at working with some of our community partners and trying to just see how we could mitigate some of the mental health issues, especially those young people, those students in, in, in our schools. I think you can turn on a TV at any point of the day, and before the telecast is over, you'll hear a story regarding mental illness. And it is very apparent that the pandemic, the isolation is being felt by our, our young people. They are feeling just like we do. They, they feel the stress and the anxiety, just like we do. And I think that having a, a, a small group that can work with the schools and Four Seasons and some other partners in the, in the community can maybe help stem some of the deep emotional feelings that some of our young people have. I was even happy to hear that there's a House Bill that has been introduced, House Bill 118, that would allow, if, if, if passed, that would allow students to even take a mental health day in school and not have that day counted against them. So, even some persons in our legislature in Annapolis, and I certainly hope all local delegation takes a look, look at that House Bill 118, and hopefully see that, hopefully they can support it, because I know I certainly will support it. And I think that allowing students to take care of their mental health is just as important as students staying home to take care of their physical health when it comes to being sick with COVID and other disease and injuries. So, with that, I just, just wanted to highlight the, the crucial importance of good mental health. I know we've heard from our mental health providers throughout this term, and I know they have been working right along with Dr. McGuire. I'm not, I'm not trying to say that we, we aren't looking at mental health, I'm not saying that at all. I just would like to see a, we could work even, even closer as the days go on. Look, COVID's gonna be with us, you know, let's face it. There, there are two, two points in time. There was a point in time before COVID, and now there's a point in time with COVID. I, I really don't think there's gonna be a point in time when we're not gonna have COVID somewhere within the four corners of this country. Even Dr. McGuire mentioned before, we're, we're approaching an endemic, which means that the, the, the presence of that is with, with you in your day-to-day society. So, you know, we, we're, we're gonna have this with us. I think trying to work together to address the mental health of our young people is equally as important. We heard about the CAC today and what they're doing. We heard about the Drug Trafficking Prevention Task Force and what they're doing. You know, let's, let's get a big shout out to those providers in the community that works also dealing with mental health, and especially that of our young people. So, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Well said, well said. So, Mr. DeVilleo?
Well, I got a lot. So, I'll start with it. I don't think a week has gone by since I've been elected that I haven't received a phone call about a planning and zoning issue, and boy, they all seem to revolve around septic systems. Somebody wants to build something, and there's a septic issue. And what do I do? I call over to planning and zoning, or I call over to environmental health, and I get the answers, and I help explain it to the customer. I give them the recommendations of the individuals in this community who can self-solve that problem. They get it fixed, and they move on. I don't quite see a big difference between that phone call that we regularly all get and what's going on in Lakeside, other than it's some people who are pretty upset that there might be more people moving over here. And I'm not one of those. I, I don't think that that's quite our decision to make, to be honest. I think it's our decision to make sure that this is a safe and healthy environment for people to live, and I'll make sure that they have the best technology in there for those families when they move in. On a second note, regarding Mr. Lesher's comments about us doing nothing last month, or, or at the last meeting as far as public safety and COVID, that disappoints me because I think we are, and I think all of us have a different role to play in that. My father taught us many times to think outside the box, to make sure you're solving the problem by looking at all the different angles and perspectives that are out there. And there's a lot of different people in this community, and a mask is not gonna keep them all safe. You can wear a mask all day long and still get it, and that's why there's a vaccine that's out there. I wish to God there was a vaccine for Lyme's disease, and I'd get that right now because I live back in the woods, and I'm very proud of vaccines. I think medicine works. So, when I see a sign that goes up in a neighboring county that says masks required regardless of vaccine status, that's one less person who's gonna get vaccinated because they've gotta wear the mask. They don't care. That's a roadblock. That's a mental stop for individuals when they see that, and they think, I'll just wait, and then it gets put off, and I don't like that. I like to approach this project, problem from all the different perspectives, and I think that there is public choice. I think when you go into government buildings right now in Talbot County, you have to have a mask on. When you go into schools, you have to have a mask on. When you're going into places of health where people congregate, you have to have a mask on. For the rest of us, it's our decision whether or not to go into acne or go into Lowe's with a mask on, and how far away to stay from people. And we can do that, and we're doing everything in our power and spending a ton of money giving vaccines out and giving masks out to anybody who wants one. And I think that if we're gonna solve any kinds of problems, it's gonna take all five of us working together to make our own constituents happy, and then all of Talbot County will be a happy, safe place to live because we are five very different people from very different backgrounds who all chose this place to live and this council to run for. And I'm very proud of that, and I like each and every single one of you, and I appreciate each and every one of you. I recently read an article in a business magazine about a board and how important it is for the president of that company to be able to call any member of that board to get an answer, and that they should all be resources to their, their, both the CEO, CFO, COO. And that's what it takes when you have a diversified board. I recognize politics is not like that, and we all have something that we want and that we're gonna try to step over somebody else to get it if they're not in our favor. But I don't see that with us. I think we've all worked really well together, and I've enjoyed it, and I have enjoyed this time, as difficult as it's been, including this meeting. And I think the public does know we care for the vast majority. There will always be a few who don't and who disagree with us, and I don't really mind that because I got you guys and you got me. Thank you.
Well said. Very, 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 just, just, just a comment on, on some of the comments here with, with council. I, I'm proud too of all five of us. What a, what a tough night on all of us. But, you know, we're leaders. That's what we are. We're here to lead this community and this county, and a lot of people rely on us. And we are, we are very different, all of us, and that's, that's why we're in these seats. And we are very, I'm, I'm blessed that we are here, leading. You know, you take, you take what's happened at, in Baltimore this week, that puts a lot of things in perspective quick. I mean, quick, and it can happen quick. So, I wanna make sure the council understands that we're here to be positive role models in Talbot County. We're positive people. We lead. We, we, we don't, we agree to disagree, but at the end of the day, I think we do come together. And it's very, it's very, very important that people see the very positive notes of all of us, okay? In this pandemic, in the last couple of years, you know, people have had some, you know, mental problems and physical problems and deaths. It's very sad. But, you know, like Mr. DeVilleo said, there is, there's a time where it's not going anywhere. Common cold's been here for many, many years. The flu's been here for many years, and we're gonna have to start dealing with it. And, and so is this COVID. So, you know, all we can do is support each other, support the community, look after their safety, but at the same time, we've, we've gotta be able to have people make their own choices, too. That's, that's sometimes what we have to do. But I'm, I'm proud of council tonight. I'm proud of staff, okay? Staff looks up to us, okay? Council, I want you to understand, when we get in the heat of the moment and we're doing things, keep, keep, keep in mind, we have council, our staff, that, you know, sometimes might get uncomfortable, okay? So, you take that stuff, you know, to heart, that, you know, when we're making decisions and we're telling this and we're telling that. I'm very proud of you tonight because I could tell you one thing. When we took a break and we all come back, and we started turning things down, and, and, and the, and the public started talking, that's what it's about. Notice what happened towards the end of our meeting. It calmed down, people were communicating, and it started to take another direction. Keep that in mind. That's my whole point tonight, to try to get everybody at the table, get it all, all these facts and figures and numbers and all this stuff, okay? All we wanna do is just sit at the table and get it right. That's all we wanna do. We just wanna get it right, and I don't see any harm in that. And, and I'm proud of council because I felt that towards the end of this meeting, that we all come together. And look, we're gonna have our moments, we always do, but I just wanna let you know that I'm proud, and I want you to, I want you to look back on this meeting, and it come around. And it come around because we were communicating with the public and communicating with other elected officials and people that make a difference in this conversation. That's what, that's what it's about, bringing people together. So, I'm proud of everybody. I know it's been a long night. So, Mr. Lesher, can you bring us home?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 8th, beginning at 6 o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at 3 o'clock PM for a work session with county staff, Sheriff Gamble, and staff, representatives from Easton, Oxford, and St. Michael's, and police chiefs on House Bill 670, Maryland Police Accountability Act of 2021, and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. On Tuesday, February 1st, at 5 o'clock PM, the county council will be holding their quarterly meeting with elected officials from Easton, Oxford, Queen Anne, St. Michael's, and Trap. On Thursday, February 3rd, at 5:30 PM, the county council will be meeting with the Board of Education. Please check the county council meeting for agenda for meeting locations. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting and reconvene as noted?
Remove. Second. We got a motion, second. Madam Secretary?
Um, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price? Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Hey, council, thanks a lot. Thank you, staff.